At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Trustee calls.
Present.
Trustee Tucker Smith.
Present.
Trustee Witten. You have a quorum.
This will be an update on the status of our presidential search, which is the next agenda item. In June of twenty-four, we had a board meeting and at that board meeting, we suspended the previous board search for a presidential search. At that time, we also announced the appointment of an interim by July twenty-four, and we would commence a new search using the academic search firm that we were currently using to assist us with this new presidential search with the goal of having a permanent president by July first, two thousand twenty-five. At that time, we were informed by our general counsel that we would need to do three things as a part of Tennessee statute. One of the things that we did not do, which is what we're doing now, TCA forty-nine-seven-one-fifty-four, section C-two, prior to initiating a search to fill a position of president, the board shall hold a public meeting to establish three things. One, the search process. Two, a statement of qualifications for the position. And three, a timeline. And so that's what we're going to do in this meeting today. So first, the presidential search partner is Academic Search. They are a mission-driven organization dedicated to expanding leadership and capacity at higher education institutions. They have conducted several searches, presidential searches, senior leader searches, and they were the firm that was assisting the university last year in the presidential search. There are three consultants that are assisting with this, two being former presidents, Maria Thompson, who's a former president of Coppin State University, John Garland is the former president of Central State University, and Amy Bonsiero, who is the assistant. Again, we will continue to use Academic Search as our consulting firm partner to assist us with this process. All candidate applications will be handled and managed by the consulting firm. Everything goes through Academic Search. And as we go throughout the process and give updates, we can update you on that as well. As far as the statement of qualifications, in working with the consulting firm, they have given us four, as we work together to come up with four statement of qualifications. Keep in mind that these qualifications are a guide, and as we form the search committee and go through with listening sessions, et cetera, session, these statement of qualifications may change. But for now, we have four areas. The next president of Tennessee State University will have extensive experience and a record of success leading large, complex organizations undergoing significant change. The new president will have demonstrated experience with successful fiscal and financial management and inspire confidence in all stakeholders that the university's future is secure. The new president will have the ability to work with and influence external stakeholders to build mutually beneficial partnerships and strengthen the university's brand. And finally, the next president will have the ability to build high-performing teams to strengthen the university operations and focus on student success. Those are the four areas, the four statement of qualifications that we are presenting for, for our new president. But again, as we go through with the profile, there may be additional qualifications that are added to this, or this may be edited. We talked about the search committee. The consulting firm has recommended a nine-member TSU search committee. Three TSU board members, a foundation member, foundation board member, one academic dean, one faculty member, one staff member, one student, and one external representative. As far as a timeline goes, the timeline is proposed, and we have to remember that things are subject to change. But before the end of December, we will have an organizational meeting of the nine committee members. Between November of twenty-four and January twenty-five, our academic search consultants will meet with constituent groups for listening sessions. We have initially thought of listening sessions with alumni, donors, students, faculty, staff, and others may be added as required. By the end of January, Academic Search will provide a draft of the profile, and the search committee will begin circulating and finalizing this ad announcing our search. And in that same time period, January twenty-five, we would also hope that the advertising plan is approved by this committee. By the end of January twenty-five, we also, again, would like to finalize the profile and that ad. In February, we will officially launch the search. Between December and March of twenty-five, that's where the recruiting and the evaluation will occur. Academic Search will advertise this position and approve print and/or online media. The profile and the ad will be sent to relevant sources and individuals. Again, that is one of the benefits of working with a consulting or a search firm to help us, the board. We aren't bombarded with everyone calling us saying, hey, how about this person? Hey, what about that person? Utilizing this search firm kind of streamlines that process for us. That's why everything goes through them. They will set up a secure website containing all application materials accessible only to the consultants and the search committee members. By March of twenty-five, the search committee will meet to review electronic access of these applications and complete a credential review exercise. The search committee will then gain access to the applications on the Academic Search website. The deadline for full consideration of applications is to be determined, but that also is based on the process and how we're moving along for the final full consideration of applications. In April, each committee member will submit to Academic Search a list of their top ten candidates of interest, and these lists, however, will be unranked. Also in April, the consultants and the committee, so this will probably be by the end of April, the consultants and the committee will meet to select the semifinalists for interviews, and the search committee will conduct the semifinalist interviews with Academic Search, observing. The finalists will be selected for campus visits. The campus visits should also happen, so there's a lot that may be happening in April. The campus visits by the finalists in April, the consultants, it's important to note that when the finalists do come on campus, the consultants will not be there. And finally, the appointment is made and announced, that's TBA, TBD, excuse me. And finally, the appointee will assume office by July first, two thousand twenty-five. That should satisfy our requirements for the process, the timeline, and the statement of qualifications. Any questions or comments? None from the committee. I'll open it up to our visitors, other trustees. Any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am, I just have one question, just for clarification. You said they, the candidates would be visiting campus at the end of April, correct?
That is, if everything goes according to the timeline, yes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Trustee calls. Only thing I would add is that ultimately, obviously, the person who would be selected would be voted on and approved by the board at a public meeting.
Yes.
Can you give the composition of the search committee again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Three board members, one foundation, academic dean, faculty member, staff, student, and an external representative. All of these things should be posted on the presidential search website, a webpage.
Has the search committee given any guidance as to how the members of the committee will be, can be selected? You know, will people, who will they submit nominations to? How is that handled?
They have not talked about that. It's something that we can discuss with them. I can discuss with them if they have any guidance on selecting the members. The committee members will also have to sign a confidentiality agreement. So just so that everyone knows, that anyone on the search committee will be bound by confidentiality because we want to make sure that any interested or potential candidate is comfortable with this process, which is another reason why the search firm recommended a smaller committee. The only other thing as a part of this update is we will need to think through, as we're going through the new president and all of the compensation package, salary benefits, and more importantly, housing. Last week or two weeks ago, an alumnus donated some time to do a walkthrough. This person, Don Harden, has donated some of his time to do a walkthrough of the president house with me and provided some recommendations for future use in kind of updating or refreshing or modeling. What I would like to do or recommend, that it's not something that this committee could do, but I think we probably need to form a working group with someone from the finance committee and even facilities to really think through what that looks like as we are looking for another president. Because something's going to have to happen when we are recruiting that president, where they're going to stay. We have presidential housing, there'll be housing allowance. So if we have the building, that working group, fine, working group task force, not sure what it should be called, Secretary Pendleton, what should it be called?
It doesn't really matter, we have a lot of flexibility on that.
Okay. So yes, someone from the finance committee and with facility support would be able to help us think through and walk through the recommendations of utilization of the house.
Procedurally, could that be just a subcommittee of the presidential search committee? We just appoint people to that, and they make a recommendation to us, and we, that is, that recommendation goes to the full board?
Yeah, I think that would work.
Okay. Okay. And that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, trustee calls, I have one more question. So these visits to the campus, as you said, for now is scheduled for April. Do we have any details on what those visits would look like? I know last year when we had potential candidates, these were like scheduled at Henkel Hall, students could come, faculty can come, alumni, et cetera, and ask questions. Would it be something similar to that, or would it just be, maybe they speak only with administration or the board? Do we have any details on that, or is there something we could do with that?
The search firm will walk us through that, but typically, it is, you know, pretty standard when you're having your presidential search, that you meet with the campus and the community. So there will be an opportunity for the, you know, question and answers from student groups or alumni or faculty and staff. The exact format of what that looks like, we can, we're flexible on that. But you will have an opportunity to meet and interact with that person.
All right, thank you.
If there is no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved.
We'll call roll. Trustee calls.
Present.
Trustee Tucker Smith.
Present, oh, oh, yes, let's adjourn. That's what I want to do. The time is one sixteen PM Central Time. We are adjourned.
Good afternoon and welcome. The November twenty-one, twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. The time is one sixteen Central Standard Time. Secretary Pendleton, can you confirm, call the roll and confirm a quorum?
Yes. Trustee Tucker?
Present.
Trustee Northfleet?
Present.
Trustee Trubber?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The agenda for the Finance Committee Meeting can be found on page seventy-three of the trustees' handbooks that have been passed out. The agenda includes a set of reports, starting with the financing of the budget shortfall, followed by the report of the financial action plan. That will be done by Dr. Burnett. Report on enrollment by Dr. Goldman. And then, Dr. Burnett is going to present a revised budget for approval for four-year twenty-five. There have been quite a few questions submitted by committee members and trustees that, depending on the responses to those questions today during the presentation, we may decide to move this item for approval till tomorrow to give everybody an opportunity to exhaust any outstanding questions. I think it's also fair to say that we continue working with management to establish a, a set of deliverables and timeliness of those deliverables. And what we've agreed to do is to work with management, that would be the audit chair and myself, to outline what those expectations are so we can continue working towards ensuring that we have an opportunity to review the necessary financials as well as any agenda item that's prepared for presentation to the board. The last item that we will receive a report on is the institutional development report. With that, I think now we can almost consider him an employee, but he's here all the time. That would be Jim Grady. But I'm just kidding, you're really like a consultant.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You should have in your books, I think on page seventy-six, oh, good, we're pulling it up. So there's two schedules that are in your, your packet. There's one that's entitled Cash Flow Actions Taken to Date, and then there's one that's talking about the closing the deficit for the budget. Two things I'm going to talk about here for the next few minutes. One thing is, I'm going to give you an update, or Dr. Johnson thought it would be good to give you an update in terms of the liquidity situation, and that's really what the focus of this first slide is going to be on when I take you through. The second slide is really taking, taking you through activities related to the budget, which Dr. Burnett will present in a few minutes or later on in this program. So that's, I just want to set the stage in terms of what we'll be talking about today. So I'm going to go back to the first one. So this is just an update on the cash flow actions taken to date since we arrived. Before I dive into this, let me provide you just a little bit of context. We showed up in early August, mid-August. We showed up, there was about five million dollars of cash in the bank. We knew that we had a ten million dollar payroll at the end of August. We had about ten to fourteen million dollars of vendor payments due. And so when you do that math, you've got five million in the bank, you've got a ten million dollar payroll, and you've got some vendor payments to make. We were unclear exactly of how we were going to fund all of that at that particular time. We knew that the bulk of the university's receivables, or the bulk of the cash that comes into the university, does not arrive until September. So we really needed to figure out how to take care of our employees at the end of August. There were two things, two immediate actions we could take. The first was, we got on the phone and we worked with our vendors to delay some of those payment dates and see if we can push some of that into September when we got the bulk of our cash receipts. And thankfully, a lot of them worked with us. Secondly, we started to advance some grant funding that was due to the university, and we really, I'd say, worked the phones to get some of those grant funds in the door. But between those two actions, if you look at the first line, our projected cash balance was still about just under four million dollars short. So we needed something else. At that point, we then started engaging in discussions with the state and talked about the need for liquidity in August. As many of you know, with respect to the funding of Tennessee State University, there's a funding formula that's been created by the state, and there's a, there's an allocation that comes to the university from the state. For this fiscal year, it's about fifty-two million dollars. That's what comes into our E and G account. We have some other money that comes in through the, the egg programs as well. But I say all that because the university gets an allocation monthly from the state. It's about five point six million dollars for this fiscal year. And what we essentially did, and the reason why that's important, is the state worked with us and we agreed that we would roll forward, or we would advance, that allocation that the university would get in May and June of about eleven point two million dollars. We would bring that forward into August to cover our shortfall in August. And that's how we arrived at an actual cash balance at the end of August of a positive seven point four million dollars. So now that we got through August, we were looking out into the near future and said, okay, when is the next challenging point that we have where we're going to be very tied on liquidity? And at that point, it was, we knew it was going to be sometime in November. We knew that we're getting the bulk of our receipts in September, the bulk of the financial aid, financial aid, student payments, what have you. Those payments were coming in, we were making payroll, we were paying our vendors in September and October. And in fact, as you can see it, that is the fourth line down, the actual net cash flow from September first to the end of October was, it was two million dollars negative. So our seven point four million dollars that we started September one with, at the end of October, was five point four million dollars. So I just said that as we got into November, we knew November was our next tight spot. And as you can see, we started November first with about five point four million dollars of cash. We knew that we had to, among payroll and vendors and other folks, we had to pay out money, which at the end of the day, we needed about nine point three million dollars to get through the month of November. And when you do that math, we were forecasting a deficit of about just under four million dollars at the end of November. Seeing that, we then worked with the state again and, and started talking about what are some other avenues that we can bring liquidity in to, again, get us through November and into the near future. At that point, there were about thirty-two and a half million dollars that was appropriated to a new engineering building for Tennessee State University. That funding was covered by what they call ARPA funds, that's the American Recovery Act. It's related to COVID monies. So it was about thirty-two million dollars that had been allocated by the state for Tennessee State to spend on a new engineering building. The work done to date on that, outside of preparing some architectural plans and doing some planning on that, was very minimal, so the bulk of that money was still available to the university. What the state decided to do, or the state helped us do, is really repurpose that thirty-two million dollars, take it out of that funding for that engineering building, and advance it to us here as operating funds to get through November. You can see that then, in that line that's represented on November twentieth, the infusion of the ARPA dollars, of thirty-two point three million dollars. And as you can see now, we received that actually yesterday. And right now, our forecast shows us getting through November and actually into the next, into the next new calendar year as well. Leaving us at the end of the day, right now, our current forecasts are showing about a, just under a sixteen million dollar hole that we need to figure out how to, how to fill. And that is going to relate to the next slide I go to. So I just took you through cash. I took you through cash liquidity. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear in terms of where we're at, what we did about it, and how the funds that came were actually funds that we had previously allocated, but that we had worked with the state to be able to use and utilize for this time period in getting us through the operation side. Right now, I'm going to focus onto the budget side, and as Dr. Burnett will show you all in a few minutes, the projected deficit for this fiscal year is about forty-six million dollars. You'll see in this table, there's a, there's a series of items that we feel are available. Some have already come to fruition, some we're still working on, to close that budget deficit for this year. You'll notice third line down or right in the middle, you'll see the thirty point, thirty-two point three million dollars of ARPA grant money. That's what I just talked about on the previous page. That's a part of it that's going to be used to close this deficit. We've been working with some of our vendors on some contracts, negotiations, which, which we're working to forbear some of the payments that would be due this year. That, that's about a five point four million dollar positive. There's some identified operating expense reductions, which again, Dr. Burnett will go into, to the tune of about one point four million dollars. I just talked about the ARPA funds of thirty-two point three. There's about seven point three million dollars due to the university from the Saudi Arabia Cultural Ministry, SACAM, which we are working on collecting this year as well. And then finally, there's a series of initiatives related to closing the gap in conjunction with the foundation that yield another three point four million dollars. So when you add all that stuff up, it, there's about forty-nine point eight million, which we believe will offset the budget deficit that you'll hear about of forty-six million dollars, yielding a surplus of just over three point seven.
Just a quick question, and this may be more relevant to management than yourself, but the items you just identified, can you just give us some up-to-date timing? Have they been completed versus what's still outstanding? And then how do you feel about those that are outstanding? That it's a strong probability that it will happen?
Yeah. On the first one, with respect to the five point four, the vendor contract negotiations, we are, we are probably about eighty, eighty percent through those discussions. We've got to dot some i's and cross some t's on that, and then, of course, we, I believe there is a process of approvals that need to go through with that as well, which may involve the board. So that is, that's where that stands. So we're probably eighty percent through the negotiations. As far as the identified operating expense reductions, they've already been identified. I don't know if they've been fully executed or put in place just yet. Dr. Burnett can certainly answer that and probably will as part of his budget presentation. The thirty-two point three is already in the bank, we verified that yesterday. The SACAM receivables, I'll let Dr. Burnett provide the update on that. I don't have the latest update on that. And then the three point four is another one that, again, I have to ask either Dr. Burnett or Dr. Johnson provide an update on that.
From your vantage point, are there any, if you go to the opposite of this and say, what could surprise us?
Yes.
That's not accounted for, that could reduce the number that we think we're going to end up to cover the cash flow? Is it anything big out there that you, keep you up and worried about?
Yeah, that's a great question. And when I look at this university in whole, it's largely seventy, and Dr. Burnett said this before, it's largely seventy, seventy-five percent a people business, right? So that's payroll, and, and we've got a pretty good handle on that expense. It's pretty steady, you know, month to month. I wouldn't expect a huge movement as far as that goes. I'm not, we're not hiring a bunch of people and, and, and the like. As far as vendor payments go, again, very, pretty much, pretty steady. As far as vendor payments go, again, very, pretty much, pretty static in terms of the range. The one thing I would say that I think there is risk is more on the revenue side and our enrollment, retention of our fall enrollment, making sure that we have as many of those folks that are here in the fall come back in the spring. Again, that drives the receipt of the financial aid and the tuition that we would receive in February.
All right. I just had a brief question. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly, and so any students in the audience are interpreting this correctly as well. So the $46.1 million, this was our deficit prior to any of the initiatives that were happening, right? And all of the numbers that you're listing here, the $5.4, $32.3, et cetera, are the things that we're kind of doing this year to make sure that we're getting out of that? And you're saying with all of that, assuming everything goes to plan, we'll have a $3.7 million surplus, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and I'm not sure if that, this is what Trustee Tucker was asking, but if any of these initiatives kind of fall through, is there any plan for that? So for example, like the issue of like the Saudi Arabian money, are we sure that this is something that we're going to receive? Or if we don't, is there some other kind of plan? Because that's $7.3 million. If we don't get that, we're still in the deficit, you know? Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Those are great questions. Just one thing I just want to clarify. The $46 million, the number that it starts with, that's the proposed budget for this year? As opposed, I think, I didn't, I thought I heard you say it was coming in from last year. That's just this year?
Just this year.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
And as far as the, your example, the collection of the Saudi money, the $7.3, the backup for that, I guess I would answer that as, these are the identifiable ones that we've identified today. We are constantly looking at the operations and seeing if there's other things. I don't want to put all of our eggs in this basket, to your point, which I think is very prudent and an excellent question from that standpoint. But we're always looking for other hedges, other places that we can perhaps, if this doesn't come to fruition, what is a backup.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm assuming that the recapturing that money from the Saudis, that the, maybe this new President Johnson, who's going to be the person who is on point to collect that? Or is there someone else?
Yes. No, President Johnson and Dr. Burnett actually met personally at the Saudi consulate a month or two ago, and I believe are still having conversations with them. They've asked for information. We've provided them some information in terms of the current status of the reconciliation of the information. I would defer to them.
But just that, Chair, I just add that Dr. Burnett will be able to speak to some of these questions that you have.
Yeah.
Any committee members with any questions? Go ahead.
Going back to the prior slide, just so we can level set where we are with, at least on this slide, the only money that we've actually received and can count as received is the ARPA grant, which I understand has hit the account.
Yes.
If we go up to the prior slide and understanding that we were in a deficit situation, if we had not received that money for this month, and I call that the financial cliff, where is the financial cliff now if none of those initiatives on the next slide don't come to fruition?
That's a great question. So right now, we, our forecast right now is showing the next cliff, potential next cliff, around May. We're showing adequate, we're showing liquidity through May. We get our bulk of financial aid in receipts in in February, and then we will get, we'll be challenged when we get to May.
And this might be a question for the administration, but I'll ask it. On this initiative slide, is there any particular sequencing that needs to occur that could change that May timeline or any other timelines, such that, you know, certain things should fall in place first and then next, et cetera?
Yeah, no, I mean, for me personally, certainly Dr. Johnson, Dr. Burnett can weigh in, but for me personally, we are, these are all being worked on right now, and to the extent that they can be brought in like yesterday, is the plan, none of them are dependent on each other. They all could come in at the same time.
I'm good right now. I wanted to follow back up on Dr. Burnett with the Saudi Arabia piece and the timeline for that.
Anything else, Jim? That's you. Whatever's that.
Nothing for me. Anything else for me?
A quick question. In terms of your engagement with the university and the firm, what's that commitment timeline look like?
Right now, our timeline is set to end at the end of, the end of November. December 1st is when it is to end, but we've been in discussions with the administration to help stay on.
That's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We do have another question.
With regard to the ARPA funds, you mentioned that it was an engineering building. Was it engineering or ag, just for clarification?
I was told engineering.
It's ag.
Ag. Apologies.
No.
It's ag.
So with the ARPA funds, through utilizing those funds that were going to that building, where are they going to get those funds back?
That's a great question, and I forgot to mention that. I mentioned, I meant to mention that. There was $250 million that was appropriated by the state a couple of years ago, I believe. I don't remember the exact date, but related to capital projects and renovations of certain buildings. That $32 million will come from that $250 million pot, if you will.
And when will they be able to access those funds for project, start their project?
You're talking for the ag building?
Yes.
I don't have an answer to that.
I have one last question. For the expenses where it says vendor contract negotiations, are these vendors, like things like Aramark, like food services, things of that nature? Or are we talking about something else, just for clarity?
Yeah, no, you're on. It's basically some of the food service, some of the sorts of services, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At this time, Dr. Burnett is going to give an update on the report on financial action planning.
Good evening, good afternoon, Chair, Trustee. Tucker, can you put that slide back up again? I want to do a little bit deeper dive on the, those expenses and be able to answer. Yeah, that slide right there. I'm Darryl Burnett. When I came here, I was earmarked to be the senior advisor to the President, of which that was in the mid-August timeframe. And when I arrived at that time, realized that we had some serious issues on the business side, and I took on the interim role, Chief Financial Officer. Working with our colleagues in M, as well as the staff, we were able to make some significant progress. Real quickly, I just want to address some of the questions that were raised here. The $5.4 can be taken off the books right away. Can be taken off the books right away. That was an invoice that arrived in October for the food service expense for this first half of the year. We could take that off the book. Dr. Johnson, Mr. Thompson, myself, we're in negotiation with Aramark leadership. We've come, but it's going to require a contract amendment, but at the end of the day, we can realize that right away. Some of the other operating expenses someone also addressed, those are real savings that we were able to come up with, where we found duplicate contracts, we were able to terminate them and avoid incurring those costs, as well as some other services that we end up having to terminate. Primary related to travel, where we were able to get the new buses that helped reduce our reliance on very, very expensive commercial transportation. So that also added some savings to the university. So I just wanted to cover those two questions that were raised before I go forward with my presentation.
Okay. As far as the vendor contract negotiation, you said, so is the $5.4 just not due now? It's going to be due later?
No. Aramark bills us twice. They bill us for the fall term. Again, a snapshot of the students are currently enrolled in the fall, September timeframe. Then they do a true-up in December. In mid-October, that was when we got the invoice for the service for this fall. They bill us twice, once in the fall, once in the spring. The fall billing was $5.4 million. Now, there's also late fees and penalties associated with that that we're incurring that will also be taken off of the book as a result of our negotiations. So yes, that is a cost that's been incurred. That's an invoice that must be paid, but that will be taken off the table for this year as a result of extending the contract out for five years. But we have to amend that contract. We have to get the approval of the OFO with that adjustment to the contract.
So are they going to just take this $5.4 and just split it up over future years for us to pay it later?
No, no. What happens, it's a partnership that the university have with this particular vendor. We get a lot of funding from them in the form of scholarships, revenue sharing, and they pass that back and forth. As we incur costs, they provide some of their profit margin back to the university. So what they've done is gone out, extended the contract out, this is the option, extended the contract out from 2031 to 2036. Now, if the service was terrible and the people were having issues with the food and that sort of thing, that would have been a major concern that we would have to consider as far as extending the contract. But they have been a very worthy partner, and I think by us moving forward with this extension, that will continue that service that they're providing to include the franchises that are there. We got Chick-fil-A and Starbucks. All of that's part of the Aramark umbrella, along with the different canteens that are locating in various building across the university. So they make investments in us as we pay them for the invoices and the services that they incur to cover the cost of the food for the students.
Can I actually ask a question about that? So you mentioned Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, all of that. Now, I know, you know, some students have what's called dining dollars, you know, they don't pay, that's kind of included in their meal plan, whatever. But I also know students that do pay for those services, you know, especially as the semester ends and they kind of run out of those. I know myself to be one of them. But my question with that is, does that make any revenue for students that purchase from those Starbucks, Pizza Hut, all of that? Does that make any revenue that goes back to our pan, that $5.4 million off? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I can't answer that question. Auxiliary services don't report to me, but it is a partnership. They are entitled to charge just a little bit of a profit to the students. All that's written in the contract. And then they pass a portion of that profit back to the university.
Got you. Thank you.
Just to go back to Trustee Smith's question, and I didn't, I don't think I understood it. I don't know if anyone else caught it. So the $5.4 million that was due has been, as you said, removed. We're extending the contract. I'm just trying to, if you could just, in layman's terms, it was, we owed $5.4. What do we owe now?
$5.4 until we agree to the option that they've offered us.
And we will owe what then?
Nothing for the fall term.
And then the spring term?
Owe them for, based on the enrollment, based on their spring enrollment, they'll make a determination. But right now, that's a $6 million bill for the spring enrollment. Based on the forecast, they'll adjust that once the enrollment is determined. It's mostly the students that are living on campus. They're required to eat in the dining. But once that determination is made, then instead of making one payment, $6 million or whatever it turns out to be, they're going to aggregate that over the six months of the last six months of the fiscal year.
And when did the current contract expire?
2031.
And now it will expire at 2031?
Once we agree to their proposal, yes, it will extend that existing contract out to 2036.
And then a separate question. You mentioned the buses actually reduced expenses. Imagine the buses was a capital purchase, what amount of reduced expenses that purchasing those buses result in?
When the football team travels, both local and away games, okay? Local and away games, you're talking closely $14,000 per bus. When the students travel locally or away, it's a very, very expensive proposition because we have to use the large coach buses, the commercial coast buses to transport them. We have to compete with the other bigger schools in the city of Nashville. That's why it's such an expensive proposition when you don't own your own capital assets. Those three, and I think eventually four new buses, going to help cut the cost. We were able to have two, maybe two or three buses during this period, of which we've paid for the buses, but now we don't incur any of those causes to commute them back and forth to the, is it the Titan Stadium? We had to pay those costs. So for some athletic programs were concerned, that's a tremendous cost. The ban, the ban incurs those same costs whenever we're transporting them around. So as a result of having our own buses and restricting travel just to home games, that has generated dollar savings to the university.
So back to the Saudi monies, is that a lump sum that we're going to receive or we're going to receive that?
Excellent question, TBD. What they wanted, let me just back up just a little bit. Dr. Johnson, myself, and several others traveled to the Washington DC, went to the consulate. We are Tennessee State University, one of well over 100 colleges in this country with Saudi students. And each one of those colleges are sending invoices in in order to get reimbursements from that particular nation. When we don't submit accurate information because they got an auditor there as well, then that delays our payment and puts us back at the end of the review process. You've got Princeton, Yale, even other HBCUs that have Saudi students. So as a result of our trip, traveling up to Washington DC, they were on one side of the room, we were on the other side of the room, Dr. Johnson came right on and apologized. Along with our trip, they took Tennessee State off of the preferred institution list because of the issues that we've had in the past. So as a result of that trip, we were able to mend our relationship with them, and they said, listen here, folks, put all of the invoices in one big spreadsheet. Send it to us, we'll do the verification and send you one check. That check, that's outstanding, $7 million. We're still going through that process right now, but we hope to get the money soon.
Dr. Burnett, quick question, couple of questions. So I understand there's a savings reducing the travel, but did we also go back and estimate for what expenses we will incur? Even though we're owning it, there's still some minimal things that we include that, though?
No, we, no, we did not. We did not. But that's an excellent question because our students are traveling back and forth locally all the time to different areas. We're not talking about the small-team athletic programs like the basketball, tennis, golf, all of those entities that, where we had to rent a van, seven-passenger van, eight-passenger van, commercial bus, all of that has gone away. Okay? So that's going to help us tremendously because those buses have been paid off.
We'll go back and add.
And all we're now paying are just the fuel and the driver. You with me?
Yeah. I just want to make sure we go back and add that so we can get a true net saving.
Exactly. Exactly. That's what I said. That was an excellent question.
Because I got to put gas in my car, so I just want to make sure we're estimating that.
Exactly.
The other question I had, and I think Mr. Grady said that you guys might be able to help us with this, the Close the Gap initiative, is that $3.4, is that a goal? Where are we at this point? Are there some agreements in place? Can you give us more about that?
I'm going to defer that to Dr. Johnson. He's kind of leading that charge. It's an excellent initiative that he's launched, and we've made some tremendous progress, but he would be able to answer that question for me.
I have a quick question, and thank you.
Obviously going to respond. That's a catch-all. We actually have a Close the Gap program. We launched it during Homecoming, and of course, I also presented it in Washington when our team played Howard's Homecoming. That effort raised $200,000 at that point. We're continuing to raise funds, but this is a catch-all. There is about $3 million in the foundation that we... that we are going to be requesting, um, to, um, to receive and that will be part of this. The foundation is also part of the close the gap effort. And in fact, I have to leave here today at 5:30 because I'm gonna be going to a group that's actually doing a fundraising, fundraiser next week. So it's alive. We know that the amount of money that I have listed here is the amount of money that we can actually vouch for because most of that is actually gonna come from the foundation. But we are raising funds and the purpose of raising those funds is because our students have significant debt. And we have to manage the debt that the students have because of the challenges that they have faced since the funds that were supporting them have run out. We also have students who came in this year based on our marketing and that told them that they would get X, Y, Z. And so we, until we change that, um, those, um, we can't, what I'm trying to say is that we can't change that. And so we actually have to now manage the, those students and that's what we're doing in terms of those funds.
Do we have a goal date, at least with the foundation, as to when we can receive those funds?
Uh, no, we do not. The, um, uh, the idea is that we are collecting funds from the foundation. The specific requests for those dollars will go out this week. And then the foundation board meets on the, I think it's the sixth. I'm on that board, so. At six and then that'll be, you know, um, considered at that point. I've already had conversations with the, with the board chair. In addition, as I said, this is a continuing fundraising effort. If, based on what Jim Grady pointed out, part of what we're doing in terms of funding the budget cap is that we are replenishing the funds that the state forwarded us in August. Those funds came out of May and June. So we have time to actually raise the funds, but I know that we feel confident we can raise this because we already know where the monies are in the foundation and we already know what we are collecting or will be collecting from alums. Those funds won't be needed unless something happens that is unanticipated with respect to our spring enrollment numbers. But again, they won't be needed before April, even if there's some challenge with spring enrollment numbers. And then at that point, we will continue to dial for dollars. We've been dialing for dollars since I've been here, okay? You know, the reason why the funds were brought from June, May and June is because we had to dial for dollars in August. So this is something that we're doing. We've made a lot of progress and as a consequence, including of course, getting the switch of the funds so that we get the $32.3 million. So I can say that, no, I can't vouch for every penny from a specific place, but I can tell you that that one is pretty much settled.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Just for clarity, the goal is $400,000 if the foundation is providing three?
The actual foundation funds, um, they make the decision precisely where it comes from, but there's $2.9 million in a, um, that's available from one specific account and $300,000 available from another specific account. We raised $200,000 in the close the gap, uh, a month ago. I've not checked what the balance is now. So the combination is 3.4, that's what's shown here. We expect it will be more. I'll be meeting with some folks tonight that have a close the gap fundraiser. That's what they call it. And that they're going to actually, we'll talk to them about having a special focus for TSU.
Excellent. So based off of what you're saying, then 200,000 has been raised?
Yes. 3.2 would be coming from the foundation. I said 2.9 because I know I mentioned one source, okay? And then 200,000 of the what you see here is already in our hands.
Excellent. So ultimately, it's really two questions. I would venture to think that this goal is too low.
Wait, wait, wait. That's not a goal.
Help me.
That is not a goal. You can put that screen back up there, please. This simply said targeted initiatives to close the FY25 deficit. That's what this is. It's not the, the goal. You know, the amount of debt that the students have is much more than what I just described here. I said this is a continuing process. But what we're showing you here is that there is a gap between the $32.3 million and the $46.1 million. And as a consequence, that's why we show it here. This is a continuing effort that we're going to be engaged in. I can vouch for 3.4 million dollars right now. Now, if we talk about a goal, that's a different screen. It's a different conversation.
Well, I would like to have that conversation because what, what I'm hearing is that there is a much larger gap. And outside of the funds that the foundation is to provide, only $200,000 has been raised. And I would say that there needs to be an additional goal, much larger, to raise additional operational dollars. And maybe this is a conversation with institutional advancement. I don't wanna put words in trustee Smith Knight's mouth, but when we're talking about truly closing the gap, what is the fundraising initiative? What is that goal?
Well, that is another presentation that's gonna be coming for this committee. This part of the presentation was about the, well, actually was about the financial action plan. The earlier part was how are we going to close the deficit in the budget? But there's another presentation concerning what we're doing with respect to not only fundraising, but also activating our alums. But the bottom line is that, no. If I, I would be telling you something that's really foolish if I said that all we're gonna raise is $200,000.
That's what I thought, that's why I was asking for clarity.
No, but that's not what I said. I said that we raised $200,000 at homecoming, which never had, at least had not raised money before. And we also raised money in Washington DC. Now, as it turned out, some of the people who actually committed and wrote checks, wrote checks actually for endowments, okay? So a lot more money was actually raised, but it wrote it for endowments and not that liquid funds for close the gap. Didn't quite understand that endowments are not the same thing. So more money was raised, but we're giving you exactly what was raised back in October. Funds have been raised since. We have not updated that number because all we needed to do here is to show how are we gonna cover the deficit?
All right, so it will be very helpful just to get an overall versus all of these breakouts so that we would understand what is ultimately the goal in terms of outside funds that are being raised and how we're tracking towards that goal. So that was number one. Number two, I wanna go back to the $7 million. When they said provide the spreadsheet of all the invoices, when did they say that was due?
They didn't give us a due date, but it's already been submitted two weeks ago.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
It, it, oh, yeah, it wasn't clear. That's already been completed. The ball is in the Sacum's court right now, if you've played basketball before.
So we've provided what they've asked in terms of the spreadsheet?
We've provided everything that they've asked us. We're waiting right now. We're in a holding pattern.
Did they?
Chair, chair, may I, uh, address this, please?
Yes, please.
Sacum has a process just like we have. The challenge that they had is that this institution had not collected receivables since 2000, well, actually before 2017, but we don't have the records. So the money that we're talking about, it's been owed since 2017. Those for them is, are different fiscal years. Those fiscal years have been closed. And because they've been closed, there's a whole process that they have to go through. They have to go through an audit process and then they have to go through an approval process. And so when we began to collect the money in July, our people were sending in invoices as they got the documentation together and sent it in. It takes as long for them to approve each one of those as it takes for them to go through their process with everything. So when we went to meet with them, the first thing was that they were really kind of pissed off at us because we are coming to them and their books have been closed. And so there's a process that they go through and that's why, um, you know, we feel comfortable that they're going to actually give us the money after we talked while we were sitting there. They sent a person out and they came back in and said, we just transferred $500,000, really as a good faith gesture. Then they took us around the, the cultural ministry, showing us the markup of Mecca and explaining what the Saudis are doing and talking to us about how they would like to continue to work with, with this university. So that's what happened. And so we expect to get the money as soon as they get through their process, but it's a process. They have to open the books of years that have been closed.
So we just don't know when it's coming, basically?
I, I would say, well, basically, we don't know when it's coming, but we have full expectation that we'll get it.
President Johnson, I just had a brief question. So with this close the gap money, assuming that we get more than, I guess, kind of the minimum that we need in order to be able to, uh, get out of this deficit, do we have, is there like an actual guideline on how these, on how those surplus funds will be distributed? At least to, if you're saying it's paying off students' balances, correct? Is there a way to determine like if it's based on classification? Like we're, we're gonna hit seniors first or freshmen or something of that nature? Do we have any details on that?
Yeah. Well, we'll go a little bit more in detail on the institution scholarships that have been given to the student.
Okay.
Which has contributed to the cost, to the cash shortfall.
Okay.
When we give students institutional scholarships, it's not monetary. We don't get a nickel. But the student doesn't pay the whole cost of the full cost of attendance.
Right.
So it puts a gap. Closing the gap is filling that bridge with real money. Money that has been raised. It covers the cost of the student debt. The money comes into our banking account and allows us to pay the bills. Institutional scholarship does not do that.
But also, we want to make sure that part of the funds are for that and the other part of course is student indebtedness. For instance, our seniors this year owe the university $500,000. Okay, that's not in a payment plan, not whatever. And so part of the reason why we're doing this is to do that as well.
And to pay off those balances, correct?
Right.
Okay, and so you're saying part of that, I guess surplus money will go to that and you said the other part would go toward actually filling those scholarships with money?
Yes, right.
Okay.
After, after we pay off the debt, so.
Okay. So we're targeting the seniors first and then the freshmen. We have, you know, and we'll be, we'll be working with the foundation because they have their model too for dispersing their funds out to students who have indebtedness to the university.
Thank you.
I think we've got a couple more questions, but feel free if there's a question that can be answered in an upcoming presentation, we can, it's okay to defer that until the next presentation. But I think we have a question here.
Yeah, I just want a clarification, one more clarification on the close the gap. Because I think I heard two conflicting things, but I wanna reconcile them. You mentioned that the foundation has committed to the funding and that's settled, but then you mentioned they meet on December 6th. So do they need the vote and approve that or what, what confidence? How do you have confidence in the matter is settled?
Well, I could speak to that. What I was saying to you and, um, and to the rest of the trustees is that we know that there are certain dollars available in the foundation. I've already had conversations with the foundation board chair. We have to make a, um, we have to apply for the funding. The funding is in fact there and they understand the reasons why we use, why we need the money. One, because we are retiring student debt. That part of the monies are, are, are going to definitely be for student debt reduction. The other monies that we're raising that are at the nascent stage will be for student debt reduction as well, but we're not gonna stop to, um, to trustee Chapman's point, we're not gonna stop. We're gonna continue to raise the funds and we can use those funds to offset non-cash, um, uh, scholarships that the university gives. They're called institutional, institutional scholarships. So that is what we're talking about in terms of the funds. No, we have not gotten that letter to the foundation. I've had conversations with the chair. I spend time and know, um, from talking with, um, the chair of the finance and audit that we should be able to, um, get those resources to support our students.
I'm going back to the vendor contract negotiation, just some clarifications here with Aramark. We're fine with Aramark, but you're doing some negotiations to extend this contract to 36.
Yes.
Right? And you also mentioned that Chick-fil-A, Pizza Hut, those Starbucks, those are part of Aramark?
Yes.
What about the fooderies or eateries in?
Yes, that's part of Aramark also.
New Residence Hall?
Yes, and that's part of the profit that we were able to get back from them.
So my question, yeah, yeah. My question is, is Aramark the only partner with those, um, companies? So if a Chick-fil-A was on another institution of campus and they didn't use Aramark, is that possible or are they only affiliated? Do they have an exclusive agreement with Aramark? Maybe I should say it that way.
Yes, those entities have exclusive agreement with Aramark along with the bottling company. And I'm not sure if it's Pepsi or Coke. It is Coke, it's Coke. But those sales also are in back to the university as a result of those bottling rights that Aramark has.
Thank you.
Just to check the information on this slide versus the one that Jim put up. I think here's at 6.9 and this one, that's been presented here has 3.7.
Those are two different, they're two different slides. One's on a cash basis, this is on a cash basis. You were saying the, you had 6.9 somewhere?
Yeah, in my presentation, the cash flow in my board book, it has that slide of targeted initiatives to close the FY25 deficit. It starts with the 46.1 at the top in terms of the before initiatives and then it nets out at 6.9.
Can you, so in your board book, it's 6.9 and right here it's showing 3.7, is that what you're?
Yeah.
I'd have to take a look at what you're looking at and I can, if I can do that, I'll, I'll do that separately and I can come back.
Okay.
So speaking of a goal, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll have a 3.7 million dollar surplus. What is the magic number that we're looking for in order for us to feel like we're whole?
It's more than 3.7. We have to get through the summer. Excellent question again. We spend roughly around a little less than 12 million with payroll and all of the operating expenses. As we get closer to the summer, when you have low enrollment, low activity, that's the probably most difficult time that any university encounters because usually that's the time when facilities ramp up and get the campus ready for the fall term. So we have to start working on that strategy. We don't have that yet. As a result of yesterday's appropriation of the 32, that helped us get to the end of this year. And the next step, getting back to your question, Madam Trustee, we're gonna have to put together that plan for the summer cycle. The next time we see a large infusion of real money coming to the university- The next time we see a large infusion of real money coming to the university is usually in the October, September timeframe when the pill is released to the universities.
And maybe when you check that, what's missing between Jim's slide and this slide is the Title III endowment matching.
Trustee Tucker, I believe you have an old version of the slide. There was an updated version that was created with more information and, and.
I sort of like the old version better.
I understand. I'm very sorry for the confusion, but yes, there was an updated slide that was prepared.
That explains it.
I have one more question if possible. So with this, back to the close the gap. Once we do receive this money, do we have any clue on, I guess, like the rollout for student scholarships? And then I guess making sure the balances are paid off, especially the debts? Because if we're talking about seniors, right, well, we know that they're set to leave in May. In order to even apply to graduate, you pretty much need your balance to be down a certain number. So do we have a timeframe for when those debts will be paid off for those seniors? Only because, you know, that kind of, that, that clock is ticking, so to speak. Does that make sense?
It, it makes, yeah, it makes sense. But we, I, let's see how best I can answer this. We're still processing students now for spring term. Once we determine through the FAFSA and the loans what that gap is, then we'll know what those balances are. We won't know that probably until the February timeframe. You with me? And then we would begin targeting seniors because we gotta improve retention. And we gotta invest in the freshman class. We want to get the seniors out because when they leave, we're not gonna see a nickel from most of them, okay? So we want to make sure when they leave, they don't owe the university. And we'll concentrate on the juniors and the sophomores as they articulate towards their degrees.
And, and I understand that, and I think that's important as well because as we've all been privy to, I guess, within the last couple of months, the state money that we're receiving is not always about retention, it's really about progression and graduation. So I think that's something for people to know, especially the audience. It is going to be important to target those seniors first because once they're able to graduate, we can get more money from the state, right? That's at least something to think about. So I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Burnett, one more. I think the thing that's still in people's minds, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, is that this is just so that we close this fiscal period in a decent manner. It does not have anything to do with us needing to rebuild our reserves. And just like in our own homes, we just hope the HVAC doesn't go out, we hope. So this is just for us to.
Get to the end of the fiscal year, the break even. Excellent question again. We've already looked under the tent. It's gonna be two to three years before we build an adequate reserves to where we have the cushion going into the spring term. Most colleges and universities in the country try to put at least ninety days of cash in reserve on June thirtieth. We didn't have anything this year. As a matter of fact, fourteen million dollars of last year payables rolled into this year, which put us in a deficit spending at the very start. So yes, we gotta build those reserves up to get us through the summer cycle.
But I think it's safe to say that management understands we need a bigger number and at some point we're gonna have the conversation on that, right?
I'm pleased with the three point seven rather than a zero or a negative number, but you're right, trustee Tucker. We gotta build that much larger to the tune of about ninety days of cash on end.
We look forward to that update. Anything else you want to present to?
I was gonna go into the financial action plan, but I feel like I've already answered everything.
Wait, wait, one more. This, it may be into the financial action plan, so just let me know. But we were looking here at the operating expense reduction.
Oh, yeah.
What did that entail? Did that entail include any of the staff reductions? Or was that only the savings that you were expecting to have from getting the buses? Part A. Part B, this is just as a side, what's the capacity of the buses? The motor coach buses?
Four hundred, fifty-four people, fifty-four people. And you got the storage compartments underneath as well for the equipment.
What's the size of the band?
I am not as sure. A O B, I know, I'm. I, I'm not sure. Easily over two hundred, but three hundred, you could, four hundred?
I wanna say it's like one eighty to two hundred, but yeah, um, wait, how many buses do we have? It's four, right?
Four, yeah.
I thought it was three buses.
Three buses, the fourth is coming pending if we make the payment, but it's ready to be developed. Yes, we have three. We paid for three. We got one that's ready to be delivered soon as we get the cash to cover that cost.
So back to the question of the one point four, what did that include? Was it?
Oh, I was trying to get back to that, okay. Public safety, we were able to reduce some of the security costs. That's five hundred and four thousand dollars. Information technology, under the leadership of our new C, interim CIO, I was able to terminate six contracts, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We terminated one of the ads, a three-year ad at the airport, equating to three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Athletics, as far as terminating transportation to the Titan stadiums during home ballgames in Perdiam, that saved eighty-two thousand dollars. Facilities, cut back on supplies in fuel, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We talked about Aramark. And then we limited the band trips on away games. As a result of that, we were able to save two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Just for clarification, what was that eighty-two thousand for, if you don't mind me asking?
Oh. When the, probably the second ballgame, I believe, Dr. Johnson, we got privy that the band, I mean, the football team would stay at a local hotel on that Friday and then travel from the local hotel to the Titan stadium and then back to campus on Saturday. Staying in hotels is a cost.
Especially in Nashville, got you.
Then we gotta feed them also. So we were able to eliminate that. So we lost out on the first maybe one or two games before we were able to change that protocol to require the team to stay on campus and eat in our own dining hall.
Just following up on that point right there, just following up on that one. So for people who follow athletics, particularly football teams, it may not be the same for basketball or any other sports, but for the football teams, them being in the same place, I mean, I understand cost saving, so let me say that part. Did you all have the conversations to really, you know, try to understand why they were doing it and the purpose of the training, the pre-treatments, the pre-mails, all of those things for the football teams? It's, it's a little different. But how did you go about making that decision? And were they consulted before doing this? Because we don't want our players getting hurt if they're missing out on any of the, the training part. I understand the lodging, I understand the meals. And I know we don't have an athletic dorm anymore where all of them are there, but just can you tell us a little bit more about how that was made?
Let me, let me address that. I, I actually don't know of a school where the, where the athletes who are playing home games stay in a hotel. I was president at Clark Atlanta University and we did not have that. I was interim president at Kentucky State. We did not have that. That's not something that's required or expected. Our conversations though, this is not a top-down organization, although I do actually have to make the final decision. These decisions involve our cabinet members. Our athletic director, speaking with our, our coaches, comes back with a plan. And so that's where it came from, but that's not standard, that's not standard at all.
Okay, I would suggest at this point that you continue with your financial action plan update.
Can you switch presentations?
That may raise more questions, but it may also answer some questions before.
Right before you do that, I'm so sorry. I just gotta ask one more question, I promise. So back to the close the gap initiative. With that, have we received any kind of funding from our, I don't want to butcher the term. Is it president emeritus currently, Dr. Glover? To my knowledge, she was listed as president emeritus for the university to help raise funds. Is that correct? And if so, is that a part of that close the gap initiative in any way? Has she aided us in that within the last, I want to say five months since she's left the university?
I would ask when, when Dr. Tony comes up, she can talk about that. But the answer is that anybody can help us, okay? You know, we're not proud, we need the dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start right there. Just to make sure we're all on the same page. You hear, or you've heard Dr. Johnson mention trajectory change initiative. And one of those initiatives was to launch a financial action plan. Basically what you see there, a strategic plan with achievable objectives, timelines to ensure sustainability, operation efficiency and growth, targeted mostly in the business and finance areas. We're talking about accounting, budget, the BRSAR area, financial aid. Those areas.
Appendix B.
Appendix B, I'm sorry. Give me a little time to get to it. But the intent was for that to be a long-term, twelve-month initiative, assuming that we didn't have a crisis when we arrived. And I, the document that we had that was dated August twenty-sixth was supposed to be my job. Of course, we shift and we end up having to deal with the crisis as we've been talking about. So I say that, let me see what's happening here, okay. We had to develop a short-term plan dealing with the crisis that we were experiencing. When we talk about getting ourselves out of the crisis, we have to take care, how can we garner more revenue? How do we cut or reduce our expenses? As we talked already, we already began petitioning support from external sources. The state, the foundations, as we've talked about, we talked about fundraising and gifts. We talked about improving accounts receivables because again, students make up about forty, maybe forty-five percent of our revenue streams. And so we have to improve in our collection process because many of our students, especially those who are coming from impoverished areas, don't have the funding to cover their full cost of attendance. So many of them are on payment plans or we were just very reasonable and lenient in allowing them to be enrolled with a gap, not because of the policy, but we had some issues over in the financial aid area that delayed the disbursement of their funds from the federal government. So we really had to become more aggressive in collecting funds from students. Back during homecoming, back during homecoming, I think the float I was in was almost two, two miles. From the moment we got on the float until we got to campus. From that moment till we got on campus, we're all kind of vendors selling TSU paraphernalia. We didn't get a nickel, okay? I'm coming from Jackson State and Central State. Dr. Johnson's coming from Clark and Manna University. We have to enforce our merchandise agreements. We have it, but we didn't enforce it. So those are some of the things that kind of cuts us short on the real cash that we should be receiving. We get Title III and that's the federal restricted for allowable new initiatives. We have to manage that a little bit more effectively so that we get a bigger return on our investment. So things that are new that usually are charged against E and G, if we see that that's gonna benefit, enhance how we do business here at Tennessee State University, we have to work with our program office to see if we can use Title III instead of E and G and that relieves funds off of our, and we've been able to do some of those things. And then last is, we're a land-grant institution. And we have National Science Foundation grants. We've got a ton of grants here at the university. And when we provide service to those grants, whether it's electricity, support, services, whatever, a portion of that grant's supposed to come back to the university. Given our initial assessment, we're not getting our fair share as commensurate with other LGIs. So we gotta do a deep dive with our indirect cost recovery formula and we gotta make sure that we get a portion of those revenues coming back to the university to help cover the support costs. As far as expenses of concern, yes. Personnel makes up close to seventy percent of our university's budget. And when you're in a crisis, we have to reduce the size of that cost. So we had a fire, a hiring freeze. I should have said some hiring freeze because we had to fill some mission critical positions. But that was a, that was a collaborative process by each of the five department heads to look and do a deep dive in their respective areas to make that determination, how we can reduce the budget so that we can ensure that we're able to make payroll. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let's go back to indirect costs. So the university has a formula that they attach to grants that allow for indirect costs. And I believe we get what, forty-three percent, some about forty-some percent right now?
Yes, for some grants, not all of the grants, it all depends on where the grant is actually coming from, what it allows.
So can you expound on why we are not getting that money? And why are we different from other institutions and are we not asking for the maximum? Are we asking for the maximum, we're not spending it, we're not getting it? Can you, can you help us understand what's going on with that?
I, I, I understand your question. I can't answer it. Dr. Johnson and I have turned this over to our internal auditor to do it, you know, the deep dive and independent dive where she can commit and dedicate her time towards. And then the outcome of that would be able to tell us exactly what is it that we're doing that's different from the other LGIs. She's already started doing a phenomenal job, but we just haven't seen the actual findings based on her assessments.
Is this something that we've discovered recently or has this been a long-term problem or issue?
It's been a long-term problem and issue, okay? If you take a look, at least over the last five years, our reserves have been going down. Our grants have been pretty steady. But the policy that, at least the one that I've seen, is a little different than some of the others LGIs. So the issues and the problems we're experiencing today just didn't happen last year. This has been a bowel wave that's been building up since COVID ended. And maybe even going back further than that. But part of that is our indirect costs. It's about three point four million dollars that we have built into budget. But we have to make sure that that three point four is going back to the university's bottom line to cover the support costs.
You may have said this, going on with what you said, but IDC is received when, from expenditures or the grant itself?
It's, it's from the, it's from the grant. It's from, you say the expenditures within the grant?
Yeah, so if you're awarded the grant, you're not automatically given IDC. It's only after you do expenditures do you get the IDC. Is that?
It's only after you do expenditures do you get the IDC. Is that?
It's a formula.
Well, actually, it is when, right, when you receive the grants, we'll have grants that may be a five-year, a ten-year grant.
Yeah.
Has IDC in it. It's only when you actually make the expenditures that if the grant has IDC attached to it, then we are actually able to get the funds. But the way we get the funds is that we get, we actually have to spend the money and then get reimbursed. And then out of that reimbursement, there's a certain amount of money that we get back. What Dr. Burnett is saying is that, um, the amount of money that we actually get back for IDC that we actually get for the university is in question because of, uh, policies and, 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 um, practices that have been here for quite some time. We are going through and sorting through at first saying, okay, look, don't expect, I don't have to use my experience, I know what my experience has been, but IDC is different. The amount that you get differs if it's from NSF or versus NIH, okay? So that then means that you're really going to look at other institutions to see what's going on. And in particular, how the IDC, um, that comes back strictly to the university, uh, is determined. Here, there are a lot of, um, ways in which the funds don't come back to the university. They are siphoned off into different directions because of policies that have been in place. And that is a challenge that we have. We should be able to collect the money. So for instance, if we look at our ag side, um, the facilities contract that we have, given the square footage of ag building, is, requires a, a million dollars, um, to the university. So if the ag side only produced an IDC of a million dollars, then the university gets nothing. So that's why we're going through this process to figure out what's going on. Everything that, 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 um, that, uh, we are doing has real, a lot of involvement. And that's one of the reasons why for this one, we've asked the internal auditor to take it on because we have so many other things we're dealing with.
My slide doesn't match your slide in the book. Is there an update somewhere?
This is the updated version. I'll make sure the book has the latest version.
Thank you.
Okay. As far as expenses of concern, we talked about filling mission critical positions. We talked about moratorium on travel. We have a lot of temporary, uh, contract with staffing agencies, so we've taken a look at those. We're reducing some of those, they're not as critical as the, uh, in-house people, so we're reducing the costs in that area. We, um, when we process requisitions, every requisition for supplies and other different, uh, tangible things come through myself, my procurement office, to assure that, um, that these things are truly needed, rather than nice to have. Uh, fuel makes up a tremendous amount of cost here. We're talking close to a little less than eight million dollars annually. So our facility staff is monitoring the fuel usage and pushing more of our travel in our golf carts versus vehicles around campus. Uh, we're cutting back on capital assets, furniture, uh, PCs, things that are non-grant related but ENG related, and we're repurposing many of those ice sets, especially if they still have useful years associated with them. And we're just looking at all areas as it relates to our, our operating expenses. We got a hundred and seventeen contracts, a hundred and seventeen contracts that we're now taking up. It should be a little less than that because we've already started, that's an old number, but three point five million dollars. And a lot of these contracts and the services we're getting duplicate what Banner does. Duplicate what Banner does. It's like third-party software that does things. So my procurement and the functional areas that have these contracts are taking a look, trying to identify the duplication, seeing if we can go ahead and terminate and get a later version that gives us multiple services, but that's another cost driver that's eating up our cash. Outsourcing and partnership has generated a tremendous amount of savings. THEC, TBR, two MOUs with those two state agencies. Those two agencies are bringing a wealth, a wealth of experience in financial aid. THEC, a staffing of about six people, the leader and five staffers, sitting side by side with five of our processors over in the financial aid department, who are servicing six thousand students.
I do have a question about that. How long will these partnerships and how long are these MOUs? Because I, I mean, they can't be here forever, so what is the long-term plan?
The long-term plan, well, TBR has a vested interest in us. I'm, right now, we haven't set a date. Those MOUs are open. We didn't put an end date because we were dealing, or using theirs, their support because we were dealing with crisis at that time, especially over in financial aid. Let's throw it out there. We have a contract with the SIG, Strata Information Group. I have to remember what the acronym stands for. Strata Information Group. No cost impact to ENG because THEC and Title III are footing the costs. They are going to come on, supplement financial aid and the other Title IV areas that are having difficulties. Records, admissions, Bursar, along with the financial aid department, four distinct areas who have to coexist with each other. Strata Information Group brings thirty years of experience working at Ivy League schools as well as other LGIs in the state of Tennessee. So this is not their first rodeo. But those folks are not only coming on board and training and getting our folks to begin using automation to process students, they're also looking at ways of upgrading our tools over in the financial department so that we can service our students better. TBR, I can't even begin with what they're doing, but their focus is primarily on the accounting and budget side. They have two experts with years of experience in both of those areas. TBR, uh, one analyst worked directly with our budget team in developing the budget. Because at the end of the day, guess who's going to receive it? They are. So we got them involved on the front end rather than on the back end. So they are fully aware of where and how our budget was developed. And Mr. Bradley will come and be, give you a deep dive into that. As far as accounting is concerned, and being able to monitor the day-to-day activity in collaboration with Alvarez and Marcel, we have another expert in the accounting area. These folks bring in credentials, years of experience, and the ability to work with the proper behavior and attitude when it comes to assessing and seeing the skill sets of our people and working with them and getting them to put the tools together to begin monitoring the daily spending and functional operation in those areas.
Can I ask a question about that since it was brought up about the accounting? Have they said when they'll be able to get us some financial statements?
Um, we, we gotta get to the specific as to what type of financial statement. We have the year-end financial statements, which we have provided, I'm assuming, which concludes cash flow, balance sheet, income statement. That is the information for FY two thousand and four fiscal year. TBR. I'm sorry. TBR and Legis State Department are currently reviewing those financial reports. And they're, they're done as far as our, our, our position is concerned. However, there's a series of audit issues or findings coming out of, out of their review, and that's what the staff is addressing. As far as month to month, because there is no money, the tool that we're basically using are daily cash reconciliations and the monthly forecast that Alvarez and Marcel is helping us with. And those are the primary, um, statements that we're using to get day-to-day through the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, but it seems like that should be a priority. So I'm curious, at least at this point, we have the benefit of hindsight. We ought to be able to get the first quarter of this fiscal year. All the information that they're using to make any decisions should be able to also flow into, you know, those financials. And for us to be able to understand and actually see the outcomes of each period, we need that to be a priority.
You are exactly correct. And even on the budget side, you have the budget, actual and expense reports, breaking it down at the divisional level, the departmental level, and that tells us how much of the budget has been spent. You begin to forecast those spending rates going through the end of the year. All of those things are normal practices, and your questions are right on target. Again, we are dealing with a fire right now. And, uh, we will begin, now that we've gotten a little relief, it will get to the mid-year point in December. That is the time now to see from a budgetary perspective where we are going forward. Because as you've heard earlier from Alvarez and Marcel, we started a year with a budget deficit. Okay, so if we had those reports, all they were going to do is tell us what we already knew. And that's why we're monitoring every expenditure, the payroll, just trying to get to the end of the month until we get our heads above water.
What's our timeline?
Timeline for the financials? I think soon, I would say in December, okay? The accounting system is there, don't get me wrong, the accounting system is there. Some of the budget has already been dispersed. Some of the budget may need to be pulled back, given what you'll hear from Mr. Bradley here shortly. But once we've been able to bring some stability when it comes to our day-to-day spending, we gotta take, we gotta take a snapshot of the first six months of this fiscal year and see exactly how much has been expensed in this forecast through the end of the year.
I just wanted to make a clarification. Um, well, one, we are, uh, in conversations with, with Alvarez and Marcel uh, because, um, it's important that we, um, continue with a number of, uh, aspects of what they do. And so that's something that we're going to be talking about. What, um, Dr. Burnett is talking about is that not by December will you receive financial statements. It's by December we begin, we will begin the process of, of, um, you know, moving that into, uh, into, um, action so that the first statement that we should actually see would be December third, uh, September thirtieth, okay? And I'm not sure what the timeline will be once we actually engage Alvarez and Marcel in this particular, um, venture. Um, and then after that, you get through a regularized process so that we can then see December on a reasonable point and, and then, of course, going forward. The thing is that none of the other LGIs actually have monthly or quarterly statements. Uh, they don't. Uh, and so this place was not that lacking. They were just doing what they had all been doing because they all were under, um, TBR. And when they came out of TBR, TBR didn't have that as a standard, so none of them do it. But this institution, because of the circumstances that it finds itself in, will need to do it. But at this moment, we have not focused on that because we've had to focus on figuring out where we're going to get the money to pay the bills. And, uh, but as I said, that's something that will be, uh, uh, you know, addressed. So no December in, I'm going to see, um, the financials. I don't see how this can happen. But we all have a regularized process, um, by the time we get to December. By the time we get to January, we'll then have the process, uh, in, in place.
I, I think to speak for all of the trustees, uh, we're a little frustrated with the lack of financials. We may be talking past each other a little bit in terms of what our expectations are versus what your capabilities are, but it's not enough. So I, I think one of the things we're, we should discuss and we talked about it is the audit committee chair, myself getting together with management and says, okay, here's what we like to see as a board who has fiduciary responsibility over the university. Is here's what we like to see monthly. Tell me why that can't be done. Uh, here's what we like to see quarterly. Uh, but I need, we need to get on the same page, uh, about financials and reporting because it's a little frustrating to be able to make decisions and support management in the things that you want to accomplish. We don't feel comfortable about the financials or the data. So we, we should prioritize that one. And I, and I think a contributing factor to that, uh, in terms of the frustration around the quality control around the presentation and what was provided to us ahead of time is, is suggested as a quality control issue. And it may be also tied to just the late notice of, of preparing the information. So we do recognize the challenges associated with the firefighting that you're doing. But at the same time, we, I think our job is to make sure we don't continue going off the cliff uh, and not being able to intervene in a timely matter such as what got us in this position to begin with.
Exactly. We feel the same way, feel the same way.
But we gotta close that gap.
We gotta close the gap, but that's the reality that we're dealing with. The reality that I felt when I got here, no financials, no budget execution reports, no ratios, no forecasting, all of the things that other universities are using. And that kind of leads back, I'll cover that in one of my, my last slide, about training and development. We gotta bring, uh, some outside consultants in that will get us up to speed in developing reports that advise us with accurate and reliable information. So that's one of the things that we have planned in our trajectory change initiative.
I'm sorry. We're, we're saying to spend money, more money to find the money?
Again, if some of these things are new initiative that's going to enhance staff performance, we can use Title III funds for those purposes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the development, but I know that to be necessary. And just making sure that I understood you. Are you saying that you're looking for additional support to create the financials?
Yes.
So is spending, are we needing to spend dollars to bring someone in to train to have adequate financials?
No, not at this time, not at this time. We're not spending any money or targeting any contracts to bring someone in to help us. We're relying on TBR and some of the experts that they have as part of the MOU.
Okay, so with the support of TBR on the ground, what is ultimately the holdup to have adequate financials?
I don't, I have to, let's take that as an action item. I'll get with them. As of last week, they've been directly involved with us dealing with the cash deficit situation that we're in and being able to identify invoices and prior expenditures to be part of the ARPA fund reimbursement. Now is the time now. We'll focus on the, uh, the financials and begin to monitor the daily activities over in county areas.
Okay. I think I want to go back to what I was asking about how much longer we are going to have these partnerships and MOUs because you talked about how much experience they brought to, they bring to campus. You went through that whole analysis, and now you're saying, but we need some more people to help us develop what we need.
I didn't say that.
Okay, clarify, maybe I didn't understand it.
TBR is here already. We don't have an end date. But they're working side by side with our staff. T, THEC, gotta get it right. THEC, they're probably going to begin weaning themselves away because SIG is on board. THEC has been on board since September, MOU is when it was signed. They've been working side by side with people in financial aid, five, six people. They've been working side by side with people in financial aid, five, six people. Now that SIG on board, Stratton Information Group and their team have mobilized, they're going to be again weaning themselves away in all of that contract to take over and training and leading the financial aid department.
So the whole time they've been here, because I hate for us to continue to use them as a crutch where they're not building up our people because, or training our people or being a valuable resource, you know? Where we're going to have to spend more money to get them to where we need them to be. Because it would not make sense that we have these people on campus supporting us, and then when they leave, we're still exactly where we are.
These are good questions. Part of what they're doing, they're developing operating procedures. They're training your staff on how to use the tool that we're already paying for, which is banners, student services. Remember I said earlier, we're currently doing things manually over in the financial aid department. So as the staff's skill sets begin to improve, then they'll focus their attention on the other Title IV areas. Bursar, admissions, records. But the answer is yes. Paying for that service, but we're not using our E and G dollars. We're using funds that was provided to us by THEC and our Title III to cover the full cost of the contract.
So just kind of from a practical standpoint, how long do we need to train? When do we say, okay, we've taught y'all, we've trained y'all, it's not sticking. We need to move on to somebody else? What's that, what's that personal point?
You mean somebody else as far as another contractor or the employees?
Employees. Like rehiring? Are you referring to like rehiring?
Like if we have, if, yeah.
If you don't have the skill set, how do we move on?
Gotta go.
Because it's, let's stop treading water, right?
This has been since the summer, and we're now heading.
Let me add a little bit more, let me add a little bit more context. Right now, we have four. We should have around 12 or 14 processors. Those job search are already out. We're trying to hire folks in those positions. We need a financial aid permanent director. That advertisement should already be out on the website. As we bring in the new, and adding in the five existing employees along with the new director and the assistant director, they will all be developing their skill sets. We'll improve, be able to manage that organization more efficiently.
Funny you should say that that financial, that financial aid director position is not posted. I'm actually on the website right now. What, you know, what's the plan?
The plan is for HR to put in these decisions.
Or has that been communicated to HR with the deadline to post the job? So what is the deadline to post that job?
Soon as possible.
That's like a button to click, to post a job.
Understood, understood. But all this materialized last week. SIG came on board last week. Last Monday was the first day here on the job. Okay, all of this is in works right now. We've given HR, oh, let me go back. We're also updating the position description. That's probably what the delay is. They're updating the position description, not only just for the director, but also for those staffers to be able to use, to be able to recruit the people with the skill sets and do the jobs.
And you know, as far as evaluating when we're talking about mission-critical positions, hiring freezes, layoffs, right? Are we, when we're doing this analysis, you've updated the job description. Is that what goes into determining who stays, who goes? Because I'm not advocating for, I want to be clear that I'm not saying we need to lay anybody off. But I think we, you know, this, while we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting, is not efficient.
Yeah, I agree. We're waiting as well. But again, the staff, we're here, we arrive, doing things manually. We're in the process of clearing students all at the same time while we're negotiating a contract. The position descriptions were, and I think dated in the early 2000s. Okay, so we've got to get those documents updated to reflect how we should be doing business today. That's why we haven't posted the jobs. My memory is coming back now. Good question. So that's the delay of getting those position descriptions, of which I received yesterday from the THEC leader who was doing the review and the update of all of the position descriptions. So I say all of that, soon and very soon, we're going to have those jobs posted on the website.
I have a question about the SIG contract. So how long is the term for the agreement? And what is your return on the investment that since you said THEC paid for it, so state taxpayers are going to see as a result of this investment in SIG?
SIG is paying a portion. Title III is paying the other half for the full cost of the contract. The return on our investment is not just improving the operation in the financial aid department. They're also bringing professionals that are going to improve business operations in the records area, the admissions area, and the bursar area. And when the skill sets of those staff improve, then the timeliness of processing students should also be enhanced. Our timeliness of reporting back to the federal government and submitting our files for refunds and loans and all the other things that students are currently still waiting for should improve. So there's just a multitude of benefits that's going to be associated with garnering the services of this particular vendor.
Okay, so, excuse me, maybe I'm not asking my question properly. But what I'm trying to figure out is, do you have some specific terms in place so that we know exactly what we're getting from this contract? Because I'm sure most people listened to the SBC meeting last week. One of the things that they discussed is all of the investments that the state is continuing to make into TSU. So my question is, did we outline some very specific things that we should expect to see from this contract?
The things that we're expecting to see are in the statement of work in the contract with SIG. Now, I can't see here and quote every single item that's in there, and we'll provide you with that. But yes, there are some outcomes that are expected that's outlined in the contract.
Okay.
I just want to, I want to add that in the case of SIG, they're building a platform for us. Once the platform is complete, which includes utilizing student banner, which we are not, the student banner setup that we currently have was set up in 2007, and therefore it has led to inefficiency. People on spreadsheets and all kinds of stuff like that are not posting the student awards, and students are complaining about that because it's all manual and you only have six people who are doing it. So SIG is setting up a platform. We are subject to audit from TSAC because of problems with our records. So they're setting that all up. Once they set it up, they're done. There is a continuing fee to update things, like things like $100,000. But this is a project to fix our setup. And that's why in the SOW, the SOW explains what's being fixed. I don't think that we've calculated how many students we lose because they can't see their financial balances. I don't know that we calculated how, how long, how many, how many students are frustrated because they can't get their, they can't, they can't get their refunds because it has not been posted. It is something that is important for our institution to do. And once they finish their setup, then we have a process that actually works, as well as people trained to work in that process.
Okay, I have a, so I have a question about the job, about the job opening. For, you said it's the financial director position, correct? Or financial aid director or?
Financial aid director.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, if it's taking this long to update and eventually post to, I don't know if it's Indeed or Handshake or whatever the job platform is, right? My first question is, who is posting this? You said it's HR?
Yes.
So if HR is not able to effectively post the job description that we've had since at least the summer, that should be a question of the HR's quality and their criteria of being met, correct? If they're not able to post something that we need, that should be a question of their ability or should that, or would you agree?
Trustee, I just said that they updated a position description that was written in the early 2000s to fit the role of what we're expecting in the financial aid department. I just received that yesterday or day before yesterday, but this week.
Okay.
Then that will be provided to HR, and HR will be posting that on the respective sites where people were financial aid employees.
So it took from the summertime until now to be able to receive an updated description of that position? Or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, you're misunderstanding. Remember I said we are getting support from THEC?
Got you.
She has helped rewrite the position descriptions, the director of financial aid position description. She just received, she just sent that to me a couple of days ago, of which I will give that to HR for them to post that on the website.
Okay, thank you for that. So my question is, do we have a reason as to why that took so long for THEC to provide that?
May I ask this real quick? So I, I, I respect THEC's role and their help. Why did we not look at another sister institution to evaluate their roles and what they're doing in the postings and create something similar? So there's access to other things that the institution could have done as well. Why did we miss those steps?
We just missed it. We could have done it, but we just missed it. We relied on the people who were here.
But we relied on people that you also are saying that are not adequately ready to do these roles.
Well, I may want to just respond because I'm just, I need to really follow the question. The people who are here from THEC are the people who actually audit the systems and the other LGIs. Okay, so why would we go to the other LGIs? We asked THEC to come. We signed an MOU with them, and then they came. One of the things that is true, beside all of these other things that I mentioned, is that if you look at the other LGIs, they have significantly more people in financial aid than we've had. Okay, and we, and they all have their systems all set up, and our systems are not set up. So part of this was THEC came in to help train the people, identify where the gaps are, and then based on all of that, we then moved forward. So no, it's not a question of not asking other LGIs. I mean, I was just talking to the president at Middle Tennessee State just a couple of days ago. So we're in contact with our sister institutions. But these are the people, and it really was important for those folks to come because, as I said, we have a TSAC audit, and the person who that goes to is here to make sure that that stuff gets fixed.
So I think I do understand, and I think I understand kind of the disconnect. What, what I, what I understand the situation to be is, we, the university is just kind of coming to the realization that we need to fill the director position. And in processing that, they wanted to source a good job description before posting that. And that's what's taken the time. But I believe, from what I understand, he received that yesterday. So this should be done, how did you say it, soon?
Soon.
Soon and very soon.
Very soon.
Okay.
Okay, and thank you for that. Because I'm not asking anyone's, you know, ability or intel. What I'm, the reason why I'm confused, and I appreciate you mentioning that, I'm just trying to make sure that, how do I word this? For THEC particularly, I'm, I was just wondering if there was a process or maybe if there was like some bump in the system, like maybe we didn't do something on our part for them to kind of delay this process? Because if this has been something since the summer we've been discussing. But that makes more sense now, so thank you.
And your point is well-taken. Why don't we use another university? We're benchmarking off of the other LGIs. You can see that in my slides. Not just in the financial aid area, but all of the areas of the business area. I've met the CFOs at Tennessee Tech, Murray State, University of Tennessee. We've been dialoguing with those folks as far as policies and operating procedures because many of them are using the same systems that we're using. So we are taking advantage of the other LGIs, but it's a work in progress. It's a work in progress.
I have one more question.
May I suggest that for the remaining agenda that we have, we got some real big conversations to have, especially around our proposed budget. So for the trustees, I would suggest that you write down any additional questions that we want to get deeper on and have that later. But some of us, I think, would like to take about a 10-minute break. You've been standing up. And let's return at 3:15.
Okay.
And if there's anything else, we need to summarize in the financial action plan.
This is it for the financial action plan. When we come back, we'll go and start a deep dive in the, in the budget.
Let's do the budget, okay? All right, thanks. Break until 3:15. We will start immediately at that time. Thank you. So are you ready? Could everyone take their seat? We're restarting the finance committee meeting now. Dr. Goldman?
Yes, absolutely.
You have the floor.
Great. Oh yeah, get your stuff out of here. I'm sorry. All right, sounds good. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, right? I'm Bridgette Goldman, the interim vice president for student affairs. But one of the positions that I have and one of the hats that I'm wearing right now is serving um, in the enrollment management position, the enrollment, um, providing leadership for that area. If you look here, your board report that you have, um, based upon some requested information, you asked for some ten year and twenty year. I went through and added a couple other items to give you some context, and so it's going to differ a little bit. But the important information regarding our enrollment numbers, et cetera, will remain the same, okay? Enrollment services consist of recruitment, graduate admissions, undergraduate admissions, enrollment services, records, registration, and also the call center currently. If you look at our numbers um, for this past fall semester, um, our total enrollment for fall twenty twenty four was sixty-three-ten. Of that, our undergraduate enrollment was five thousand fifty-seven, with our graduate enrollment being twelve fifty-three. I'll share in more details shortly about those numbers. For ten-year enrollment data trend, if you look back as far as twenty fourteen, you'll note that our enrollment was at nine thousand twenty-seven, okay? And this is all headcount enrollment. That's important for you to know. Headcount enrollment is actually the actual people that are here, not the number of credit hours. It's not FTE. This is headcount, okay? And if you note, there's a lot of volatility, um, starting, we'll look back at the twenty year as well, but you'll note that in twenty fourteen, we're at nine thousand twenty-seven. Twenty fifteen, we went up, then we went down. It's almost like Bitcoin. If you invest in Bitcoin, you look at those things on a daily basis, it's up and down, volatility. You don't want to do that investment. So we're either way down now to twenty, um, to sixty-three-ten. Take a look at the twenty year. You'll notice that, I broke it out, you have both undergraduate and graduate, both fall as well as spring. And you can really see the trend here if you look at the volatility. Look at the undergraduate side, which is um, the very first column there. You'll note that we're up as high as seven, seven thousand. Graduate was up at um, eighteen forty-four, but then you'll see we dipped down to, um, and graduate, we go up to nineteen twenty-six, then we're at seven eleven. But you'll note that for the totals, we're up as high as nine thousand, um, in twenty oh six, oh seven, oh seven, oh eight, we're at ninety-sixty-five, then we dipped down to eighty-two fifty-four. But if you notice from twenty, from oh five until about twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, our numbers are going to stay between nine thousand and eight thousand, okay? But then you hear, you, you'll see here, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that there's a significant variation from that. Now we're at eighty-one seventy-seven, and then our trend is downward. We're at um, seventy-seven seventy-four. Then we pop back up a little bit, then we go back down to seventy. So you'll see that it's very volatile, but there's also been, that trend line has been reset that at one point we were trending more eight, nine thousand. Now we're trending more around seven thousand, okay? But then we have this pop in our enrollment at twenty-two, twenty-three with the large class with our freshman number of um, ninety-two eighteen. But then, of course, then we have a dip of eighty-one ninety-eight. Let's look at that a little bit more detail for you, okay? Now, thanks to our, um, our current group, Alvarez and Marcelle, they shared some insightful information. If you look at our enrollment, you see that top part of that, um, of our nine thousand. I'm gonna look here in this chart. I know it's pretty small, okay? But you see the nine thousand two hundred and eighteen, but then you see our dip at eighty-one ninety-eight and then now sixty-three-ten. Now here's some very insightful information. Look at this. Our number of completed applications were at a record high, okay? That conversion rate was not so great, but the applications were at a record high, all right? At um, sixteen thousand, um, a little over sixteen thousand students, okay? Fall twenty twenty-three, we have almost a third in terms of applications, which is about brand identity, by the way. And then fall twenty twenty-four, we're even less than that, okay? Brand identity for sure, right? But then we also have, if you take a look at these numbers here in terms of completed application, our first time freshman enrollment. So you got, um, if you look at um, twenty twenty, seventeen hundred, then we're at sixteen. Then we pop up to thirty-five hundred, right? And then we're back down, we level set to about seventeen hundred, and then we dropped down this semester. Here's semester and interesting information. Uh-oh, what happened to that slide there? The interesting information that I want to share is that uh, we retain our freshman students, at least this particular class, at thirty-three percent. That freshman class at thirty-five hundred students, okay? If you take thirty-three percent of those students, those are the students that progressed on, right? And so if you retain it thirty-three percent and there's thirty-five hundred students, thirty-five ninety-four, that number was bigger than all of our undergraduate enrollment for that year. So that freshman class was larger than our sophomore, junior, and senior classes combined. So our number one enrollment was freshmen. And if you only retain thirty-three percent of those individuals, then guess what? You're gonna have a huge enrollment dip. You're gonna have a cliff, and that's exactly what happened. And so we go from thirty-five eighty-four, and then we dipped down, okay, for the fall, for the next freshman class. Um, some would say it's cheaper to keep them. It is absolutely cheaper to keep our students. And so if our students don't progress as freshmen initially, and if we only keep thirty-three percent of them, then that's going to impact your junior class. You're gonna lose some in terms of retention than your senior class, your, um, your sophomore, your juniors, as well as your senior classes. And so that's where we're at in terms of enrollment now because of the class and our persistence rate. So it's not just about bringing students in on the front end. It's about keeping them and putting different things in place to make sure they succeed, they're successful, and that we retain them, all right? Here's some pieces here. So what do we do? We have to have a cross-functional team with weekly monitoring as it relates to enrollment manage. We have to make data-informed decisions, okay? And we also have to focus on recruitment, retention, and student support. We have to build that triad. We have to do wraparound services for them, okay? So we're gonna do market-informed outreach to admitted non-metriculated students that stop out because that's important. We have a lot of students who simply don't return, okay? Um, we have to figure out how to do our proactive hole resolution campaigns. We have a lot of students with holes on their accounts, and we have different kinds of holes. We have to figure out what those holes are, get them released, um, really and truly increase our customer service. We need to have the Chick-fil-A way. No ins and buts about it, okay? All right? We have to strengthen our academic support and our services. Um, we have to also um, enhance our financial support, and we are working on that. If you look here, and this is important for our budget projections, so where are we going in terms of the model for the spring twenty twenty-five, okay? Our conservative projection is that we'll have about four thousand three hundred and ninety students at about seventy percent. That's conservative, okay? Likely to have about forty-eight seventy-five, about seventy-seven percent is what we retain. If we're really doing a great job and doing better than what we've been doing, we'll have fifty-two eighty-five, and that's optimistic, okay? Um, we also have to do a better job on our graduate end, our graduate students. Our graduate enrollment went from um, a high of over two thousand down to twelve hundred students. It's just not on the undergraduate level. It's also on our graduate. Um, we also um, need to develop some relationships with our community colleges so we can target our transfer students in our recruitment, et cetera. And of course, retention, 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 okay, for our undergraduate students. And this is just a breakdown for our spring numbers. You know, I, I mentioned that we were going to, our model was conservative, likely, and then optimistic. And these are our numbers in red and what it looks like, okay? And it breaks down both for undergraduate as well as on the graduate level.
Before you go to the next slide, um, do you already have?
Go back this slide?
Yes, thank you. Um, do you have where the students are already enrolling into fall classes? I mean, I'm sorry, for the spring?
I do. I don't have it on the slide, but I do know the numbers there. So in fact, um, could I be excused just for a second?
Yes, absolutely.
We have a daily enrollment report, and that enrollment report um, tells us, and I did a snapshot because I figured that was a good question, um, I would ask that question. And right now for our enrollment, for full-time equivalent enrollment, we have three thousand one hundred and ten students that's currently registered right now. And if I break that down in terms of numbers, of that, I have five hundred and twenty-two freshmen enrolled already. Other freshmen, and that's a hundred and ninety-nine. Other freshmen is a category of students who didn't persist, so they were freshmen last year. And so a hundred and ninety-nine of those students, um, are freshmen in terms of classification, but probably in terms of time here would be sophomores. And then um, our sophomores are six hundred and seventeen, undergrad special five fifteen. Um, so to give a total of undergraduate students, um, total thirty-one thirty-four, okay? But this is a headcount number, all right? And then for graduate, four oh eight currently registered. So for headcount of thirty-five forty-two, and for FTE equivalent, which is how we're paid, um, we're at thirty-one ten point six seven for the spring semester at this point, okay?
Okay, so if you know you're trying to get to at a minimum of this four thousand three hundred and ninety number, so you've got?
Forty-three ninety.
Yeah, you got a little bit over a thousand just to get to that point, and they haven't enrolled yet. Is there a plan to reach out to those students and what is that going to look like? Um, and when do you expect to have a better insight as to why those students haven't enrolled yet?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. That's an excellent question. This is not, it's not, these are, we're not looking at necessarily new students. We're actually looking at students that are here. They're here in the residence halls, they're on campus, and they have various reasons in terms of why they haven't enrolled. I would say our number one reason would be financial. So if they have a bill, they have to have a bill less than, I think it's two hundred dollars in order to um, be eligible to enroll for their spring classes. And so resolving that means resolving issues in terms of why there's a hold on their account. So they can physically be here and in classes for the spring, I mean, for the fall semester. But if they have a bill, if they're not eligible right now because of their bill hasn't been resolved or they haven't made a payment, or they wrote a bad check, or they, their payment plan defaulted on that, et cetera. There's various reasons why they have a hole on their account. And so once those holes are resolved... And so once those holes are resolved, um, then they're able to, um, register for their spring classes.
But now?
Sure.
I was gonna say, but now all of those holds are not through, not due to their fault either, right? Because I think we've spoken about some students where it just wasn't, their, their accounts hadn't been completely processed on the school's end, and there was a hold on it through no fault of the student's own, correct?
Excellent question, Chairman Smith. Um, there's various types of holes. So there's a Bursar hole, which is typically financial, okay? But then there is for, um, our freshman students right now. That's the group that's not quite leading the charge. Let's say juniors are leading the charge with one thousand two hundred and thirty that are already registered. We have five hundred and twenty-two freshmen out of the eight hundred. So you have about sixty percent of your freshmen that are actually registered. Um, they would have a hole on their account for two reasons. They would have a hole on their account because of academic advising. They have to see an advisor. That's important because we want to make sure they're signed up for the right classes. And then they would have a hole in their account, um, as a result of financial, three reasons. And then the other reason is that they can have a hole in their account because we haven't received their final transcript, okay? If we've not received their final transcript because we administer Title IV aid, um, any student that's receiving, um, Title IV aid have to have a final transcript. The transcript, you can have a transcript to accept a student on based upon their SAT, ACT, and their high school GPA. But that final transcript has to say that they've graduated, and so that's important. And so that there can be a hole in their account, um, there too. I can tell you that, um, holds are something that we have to, that's a business process that we're looking at, and we have to resolve that business process. Meaning that if it's not just financial, they can have a hole because of a ticket also, or a library fine. There's various reasons. There's probably about ten categories in terms of why we have holes. But we have what we call an enrollment management committee, and we meet. Typically, we meet, um, once, if the semester is not closing in, okay? We meet, you know, not as often. Once we get to this period, we meet weekly, and then when we get to that drop-dead time, we'll meet daily. And then we go through the students that are registered, not registered. I figure out how many people we have in housing, how many applications we have, how many students are coming in, how many students have actually registered, um, how many students have a balance, don't have a balance. That team discusses that whole piece, and then also communication, okay?
Do any of these numbers include dual enrollment?
These numbers, um, let me see here if they're special. We have undergraduate special here, but I'm not really sure if that's dual enrollment on this piece. Um, and most institutions, and I've been here only, you know, three-plus months, a little bit over three months. And most institutions, the way dual enrollment happens is that, um, the counselors at the high school select classes, and they bring them in in a batch. So they don't enroll at the same rate that our regular students. When things open up, they don't just, you know, sign up typically. And, and, yeah, and as for the ones that are currently enrolled, you want to see how they're doing in certain classes, and then for the next piece. So I don't think these numbers are inclusive in, of dual enrollment. And, and they will get better. They'll get, they get better daily because students get holes released, make payments, et cetera. Um, so they do get better. But yes, we do have at least twelve hundred more students to take care of before we get to our minimum, um, goal, our conservative model when it comes to enrollment.
Quick question, um, understanding the funding formula. What is the anticipated graduating class for spring twenty-twenty-five? Do we have that information?
Um, twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-four? Because we have, I'm sorry, we have a... Okay, when you say spring, you mean like that, that we're celebrating in December?
Enrollment for spring, do we have a good trajectory of seniors enrolled preparing to graduate? Similar to the question that was asked about the freshmen?
Sure, um, I do have a number of seniors. Let me see. I know right now for our graduation that's coming up, I think we have four hundred and ninety-three for December. About four ninety-three for December graduation. And of those individuals right now, um, when I look at numbers, I see five hundred and forty-nine seniors that have, um, enrolled in their classes. But I'll have to get you the actual numbers. I'll text someone and I'll have it for you shortly, okay? The actual number of students, of seniors that we have that are graduate-ready. Just because you're senior in classification doesn't mean you've met the requirements for graduation. So I'll get that number for you, okay?
Thank you.
Have we identified students who have not been able to enroll or register for classes, more appropriately? Because it's something that we've done on our end? And have we communicated with those students so that they don't just throw in the towel and go somewhere else?
That question is loaded. It's a really good question. And I say that because there's a couple of things going on, okay? We have, um, as Dr. Burnett was explaining, the whole financial aid piece that we have going on. Our financial aid director left, I think, in September. So we didn't advertise for a financial aid director during the summer because I think she just left like in September. It was September. I was here and I started in August when she resigned. And we had some other team members in the financial aid office resign, okay? And so that's part of the staffing piece there. But when, at a institution that administers Title IV aid, when you have a person, a financial aid director, um, they have certain security pieces with the Department of Education, okay? Those security pieces, they are the only people that can get into the system to do certain things, okay? When our person left, we had a gap here at TSU. So THEC, with them being on board, there's some state aid that we didn't have on their account. But also, we were not able to actually add federal aid on our students' account because of some, because of a gap, a gap of security pieces. So we had to get some training, had to go through the Department of Education to make you jump through all kinds of hoops, okay? And so when you say, um, no fault on our own, um, of the student's part, no fault of the student's part, okay, when it comes to that, that could be that the other part, that, that could be that they have some aid that hasn't been applied to their account because of our inability to pull down funds and have access to that file, okay? And so if that's the case, then yes. Um, I can't tell you how many students I've had to do some intervention with and add or send a note to the Bursar's office and say lift a hold, et cetera. So we try to when we know, but there's some situations that we don't know about. So that's why I said that was tricky, okay?
So why would there be a circumstance where you would not know?
Yep, exactly. This is a circumstance. When it comes to the honor system, you can tell me that I have a four thousand dollar, um, scholarship that's coming. That's an outside source, and your bill is five thousand two hundred dollars, okay? Um, we can memo aid to your account, but if your aid doesn't show up within a timeframe, alright? Then that memo falls off, and you have a hole in your account, alright? But if you can't prove to me that they've actually transmitted those funds, I can't continue to hold thinking that that's... So that's what I'm saying in terms of not really knowing. We have several situations like that. We have students with, um, they say they have outside dollars that are coming in. But if those outside dollars, if that information, if we don't have any verification from that outside source that the student is actually receiving those funds, we can't indefinitely hold that account open, okay? So that's a situation where you don't really know. Um, I had a student that was in foster care, okay, from Michigan. She's in foster care. She gets a certain amount of money for being in the foster care system, okay? To this date, that student still hasn't received her allocation for the fall or the spring semester. So I had to send a letter because their social worker sent me documentation that they had processed it through the state. So I sent a letter to our Bursar's office saying, please take the hole off the student's account so she can register because it's no fault of her own, right? So situations like that, if you know about it, if our students speak up and they talk to us, then they are pretty adamant about, you know, they show up, they, they talk to us. But sometimes you don't know in terms of why, so that hole will still exist.
So what is the engagement plan? Because we know who hasn't, um, registered or enrolled for the spring. What is the engagement plan for those students to, to, to figure out? What's happening, why they haven't?
Yep.
To get them to firmly to say, I'm not coming back, or what, what is that plan?
Yep. I'll tell you what we've done and what we did for the springs, for the fall semester, and what we will continue to do. What we do in our enrollment management meetings is we have the right people around the table. So I have the Bursar's office. The Bursar's office is present. The records office is present. We have athletics present. We have someone from financial aid. And we talk about who's on our list, okay? And before we make any actions, we try to figure out what's going on with those students. We send communications. Last semester, we'll do it again. We'll engage them this semester too. We engaged some of our first-year student advisors, and we had them make phone calls to these students and try, here's the deal, our students don't really answer the phone. And so we try to get slick with text communications. But still, if you don't respond to me and then walk through, um, as it relates to what's going on with you, I can't help you. And that's, that's a challenge because sometimes students just don't respond. I would say that of the students that we reached out to last semester, we probably got fifty percent of them, like, responded. We could have a conversation and talk through a plan because every student is unique and different with different circumstances.
Okay, so to kind of follow up on that from a practical standpoint?
Sure.
That Thanksgiving is next week. Finals is pretty soon thereafter, and then the kids go home, or students go home. So is there like a deadline that you all have that we need to have made contact or attempted to make contact? I mean, if they're here on campus, I, I think it would be better to make this contact and engage with them before they head home for the holidays. So what is that plan?
Yep, sure. There's not a written plan, okay? First, I want to tell you that. There's not a written plan. But I can tell you that we are, we have advisors and coaches. Uh, I think we, I think we renamed them as coaches, but they're retention specialists that reach out and not only, they have a caseload. And their caseload, based upon the students that they're assigned to, their whole piece is to engage that student and see exactly what's going on with them. We're on the back end for the enrollment management committee, looking at the numbers. But they're on the front line, meeting with them on a daily basis, on a regular, that's what they do. We also put in place what we call, um, Tiger Support. You hear more about that in the next presentation for Student Services, where we've, um, taken individuals, realigned them so that we can work towards the whole Chick-fil-A model, okay? One of the things our students ch- struggle with is having people that are advocating for them that are on the front lines. We had a customer service area, but our customer service area didn't have the ability to really read banner screens, and they didn't know, they didn't know different functional areas. And so what these individuals and Tiger Support are doing right now is they're shadowing different areas. And so they're shadowing the Bursars, they're shadowing admissions, they're shadowing in financial aid. So that when our students have questions and different concerns, they can bring resolution instead of putting them on a log to be dealt with at another time.
So these managers who have a caseload, are they reporting out on a regular basis to kind of escalate the need for, for their assistance? Because I'm pretty sure they can only go so far, but with you all meeting, the, that group you said is, are you all engaging once these case managers say, hey, this student says this? Or I can't reach this student. This phone number is disconnected for next steps?
Sure, there's a system called Navigate that's being used. It's for student success, alright? And so that's where they're able to share information, reach out. The whole goal is to get the student registered. And so, and to alleviate barriers and get the students registered. So if there's a barrier that exists, our goal is to try to alleviate that barrier, okay? But no, we're not, um, and I, you know, full transparency. This enrollment management group is the strategy group in trying to figure out what we got, where we go, and develop a plan. We have a plan that's probably a hundred and twenty-something pages deep that we're working on to solidify for you. And we'll do a whole presentation in enrollment management for the board and to talk through that as it, as it relates to our, um, our TCI initiative. But we're not there yet. We're still developing this plan with strategies for every category so we can build it out, okay?
I had, so I had two questions. So the first one is, um, I know you mentioned that the graduate student enrollment is down as well. Do we have any particular reasons for that? Is it like maybe like those that are getting funded by the university, maybe they're not receiving that? Is there some other thing that's keeping these graduate students from re-enrolling? Um, or perhaps is it like a recruitment issue, like we're not recruiting enough graduate students? Is there a reason for that?
It's the same reason that we have enrollment that we're down, um, it's a great question. It's the same reason why our enrollment is down for undergraduate as well, okay? We have, um, we have some brand identity issues we have to work, work through. We have some marketing, we have some strategy, we have some recruitment. Graduate, um, graduate programs just moved over to Student Services, and they actually don't really physically move until, I think, January. But we just, that's just an area that we... Part of the whole enrollment piece is to put everything enrollment under one umbrella. So we'll know what the left hand, the right hand is doing. So when we attend an event that we can represent without sending five people out. So maybe business school has a, a person at a recruitment event, ag has a person, graduate has a person, and undergraduate. In order for us to be leading our processes, we need to all be under one umbrella, seeing it from the same handle and have one representative that can do all things, okay?
Alright, thank you. And then one last question. So, um, I know we're mentioning here like obviously the enrollment model, um, how important it is to actually make sure that we're keeping students here at the university. Um, my question is though, do we have any kind of, I guess, progression model? In, in the sense of knowing that we're getting funding from the state based on how easily students progress? It's not about, oh, well, we have a freshman that came back. You know, if they're coming back with twenty credits in, from one year to the next, that's a problem, right? It needs to go from zero to thirty, as you know. Um, or from thirty to sixty, et cetera, et cetera, till you get to that graduation point. Are we making sure that these, especially freshmen and seniors specifically, are we making sure that they're progressing to those, uh, I guess, benchmark points from zero to thirty, and then from, I guess, ninety to graduation? Um, is there a model for that, or is they, or is there any kind of, um, estimate on that? Because if we're discussing seniors that aren't registered for classes for whatever reason, um, or even if they are, right? They can still register for classes. It doesn't mean they're gonna be ready to graduate. Um, do we have any plan in place to make sure that they get to that final steps? And then that way, not only do they get, you know, completed with their degree goals, but we also get money from that?
Yeah.
Um, do we have anything in place for that?
We absolutely do, and, um, I, I handle the front door. If you think about a hole, we have a front door, you have the back door. We typically don't have a person standing guard at both at the same time, so...
Actually, I was gonna ask because I know that, um, the, the way in which, um, the, um, this afternoon is structured, um, the conversation now is really on the budget. Um, there's a student and academic affairs committee meeting, and that issue is actually gonna be discussed there.
There's, there's a student success plan that we'll go over.
Thank you. My apologies.
No problem at all. That's a great question, yeah.
I do have a quick question about, um, our estimates. So in looking at the twenty-year enrollment history, it looks like the last two years, we've been about nineteen-hundred down coming back in the spring. And so in your, um, model, you're saying more likely to be at the forty-eight, seventy-five, where the conservative numbers, what we've done historically? What's, what's driving the difference? What makes you think that we'll have more than what we've had historically?
We have, I'll go back so you can, you can all look at the, the piece here. So the conservative model is forty-three, ninety, and, um, the, um, likely for the spring is forty-eight, seventy-five, like you said, and then optimistic for the spring. And so it's based upon a percentage. It's not just based, I know you say nineteen-hundred, but it's based upon a percentage, um, over, over time, okay?
Okay, that's helpful. But and even in that, and this is where we are getting ready to go back to the budget. It's how are we, and I guess this will probably be back to Dr. Burnett, is how are we planning for that fifteen-hundred student drop? Um, and then the resources, I guess, are we making adjustments for that being less in enrollment services?
Sure. Um, we, um, have already right-sided, um, as it relates to Student Services and Enrollment Services in terms of staff and personnel. We had to make some adjustments because we're not a university of nine thousand anymore. So therefore, um, we have to make sure that the people that we have in terms of personnel represent that. The other piece that you'll find out more about, um, soon, and that is that we're, um, hiring a vice president for enrollment management. I am the vice president, interim vice president for Student Affairs. I'm serving in that spot in the interim piece, serving in the gap. But that search process is underway. Um, we need a person that has, um, really good expertise in terms of... Um we need a person that has um really good expertise in terms of enrollment management. We're in a situation where we have a person that needs to be on their Ps and Qs and know this business. There is a science to enrollment management, so we need to hire one of the best in the nation for that, okay? Yep, it is, it's mission critical.
You've seen any change uh with more in-state students registering versus out-of-state students?
For the registration piece, um let me see if I can tell you the actual numbers of in-state versus out-of-state for the registration side of it, um.
I think we've been like seventy, thirty in the past.
Yeah. Unfortunately, um I'll get you that information, I'll have it before we have our next break. Um I my categories that I have working down, I have first-time freshmen, sophomores, undergraduate juniors and graduate masters, PhD, but I don't break it down by in-state and out-of-state. But I will get that information for you, have it available, okay? Um I do know that our push now for the spring, um for this fall twenty twenty twenty-five class is definitely for in-state residents, is to have more, is to try to change that shift um from more out-of-state to more in-state students. It'll be gradual, but every person um will matter. Any more questions?
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, have a good one.
Our next agenda item is the four-year twenty-five TSU revised budget discussion.
Good after, good afternoon. Uh my name is Bradley White and I'm going to go up talk over the FY twenty-four twenty-five revised budget. I'll say upfront that TSU has five separate budgets. So we get, we we submit five budgets, one for the institution and one for each of our ag units. So there's four ag units, each have their own individual budget. So I will, their budgets are pretty straightforward and relatively uncomplicated. So I'll run through those at the end, but I'll jump starting with the TSU budget. I'm going to start with the revenues and we just got to talking about enrollment, so I'll mention this budget is based on um an FTE, not headcount. For budget purposes, FTE is fifty-six thirty-nine. So that was FTE for the fall twenty twenty-four semester. Our, um. So uh our tuition fees, you can see it went down twenty-five million dollars. That was based on a decline in enrollment and a um an additional amount for our uh doubtful account, a dollar for doubtful accounts. So we budgeted one point nine originally, it actually ended up being six million dollars. So that's another four million dollars off that uh original budget estimate. Uh another big piece is it going to be the sales and search of education activities. That pre- that pre- maintenance from athletics. Um athletics gets a portion of the student activity fee. And with the decrease in enrollment, it comes the decrease in the alignment for athletics. Uh others on there, unless you have any questions, I'll go into the next next slide. This is the same information in a graphic, maybe it's easier to understand. Uh I mean, tuition fees is forty-three percent of the budget, makes up forty percent of the revenue budget, make sure I'm saying that correctly. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is pretty much um investment income. And so uh the others, you can see state appropriation is fifty-two seven. Uh the other amounts, we did discuss earlier, we was talking about indirect cost. So our indirect costs right there, which is federal grants and contracts, three point five million. This right here is our unrestricted expenditures and transfers. The big thing that jumped out on this screen is the fourteen million dollars difference between July and now, or July and October for scholarships. The only explanation for that is that the original budget was grossly, grossly underestimated. Bottom bottom line is just a bad estimate in July. The number in October seems to be pretty much on par. Uh another one to be uh changes, you see is going to be an operation maintenance of plant and that's primarily funding for JLL. I'll make sure that we had enough money to cover the JLL expenses. Now, are you, uh JLL is the firm, okay. Okay, so next slide will be just again, just a graphic of that very same thing. This includes transfers and auxiliary, auxiliaries and E and G transfers both. So our total expenditure is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The next one, though, I think is a little more uh, it's the same information. It just does not include auxiliaries and it does not include transfers. So this gets us to, you know, the actual TSU expenditures. And you can see seventy-five million is professional salaries, eight million is other salaries. And so the total salaries and benefits total, a hundred and fourteen point nine million, that's sixty-two percent of our budget. The next one is same thing, it's just auxiliaries, uh not much to talk about there unless someone has a question. So this is a look at auxiliary enterprises, just so you can see the uh the fund balances, what makes up auxiliary enterprises. The big thing is auxiliaries should cover themselves as a whole. Uh in this budget, it does not, we're about three point three million dollars short. The big thing is the uh transfer for uh the debt service. The five million dollar transfer is really what puts us in the hole uh from housing. This, talking about debt, is the schedule that we have to go by. This is our, for this year, for this budget cycle, uh this is our debt schedule. So we got five point million and you can see what accounts or what items it's paying for. Uh that's under a column, current fund transfer, the five point seven. The other column with the one point eight, that's our debt for TSU E and G section. So that would be the um research and sponsor programs, building athletic facilities and I think there's one more um that's on the screen, so. Oh, I'm sorry, the um health sciences building, that's should be the first one I thought of. Next, this is select, I I just wanted you to see athletics. This is um the revenue, we get the the revenue expenses are coming up next. Uh you can see the big drop in, well, the major drop in um the debt, the general fund support. The general fund support is the funds that the university gifts athletics. Um and you can see we were giving, we were allocated to get done twelve million. In the July budget, it's eleven million uh in this budget, so just about eight hundred thousand, almost eight hundred fifty thousand. There should be another slide to the expenditures. And.
While we're waiting on that, back on the athletics.
Okay.
Under game revenues?
Uh-huh.
Guarantees, excuse me, guarantees.
Uh-huh.
It goes from seven twenty to four twenty. What happened?
Those are just, those guarantees are just games that we we get paid money to play. And so it just, you know, it's not um, we just don't have as many contracts to pay to play in that in this year.
No, what? Did we drop some games or from July to October?
No, no. No, we 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 didn't drop any games. I think uh what what actually happened, I think we got a uh inaccurate number. When I asked for the contracts, it was not seven twenty, it was actually lower. I originally, I didn't see actual game contracts, so when I asked for the actual game contracts, it came out as to be something different.
It was originally billed, it wasn't on real data? I, I know that you weren't.
No, 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 I mean, no, it, I, in essence, yes, I mean, that number was uh erroneous, correct? Almost, go back, go back, go back. Well, you you had it, you you all had that, right? Okay, so, so we can just can talk about the experience, I forgot, I had it. So on the expenditures.
We have another question.
Yeah.
Were you going to go onto the athletic expenditures now? Because I I had a question and maybe everybody just jumped out at me. Looks like a huge difference in the support staff salaries and I don't know if that is. Was there some salaries and coaches' salaries that moved to support staff?
Yeah, you know, I saw that and what I believe, and I don't, this, I don't know to be fair, but what I believe, I believe that the coaches' salaries and the support staff's salaries got mixed up. Because there's not, there wouldn't be that big of a jump in or that big of a decrease in supporting salaries. And I know there's more than thirty-eight thousand dollars in supporting salaries. So so that just had to be, again, I can't prove this right now and I just noticed this actually uh yesterday, that it was such a big change and so um I can get back to you.
That's not like a change from seven twenty to four twenty, I mean, just.
No, 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 I I just think that uh the salaries for coaches, because we really don't have a separate line for coaches in in, you know, in the budget in in banner, in the system, I mean, there's not a separate line for for coaches. So a lot of times they get the coach, if it's not the administrator, there's other coaches and things with other support staff, it's confused.
It's the same number, it just looks like how it was allocated in July was showing heavier on coach than support.
Right.
But when we added the two, they were.
Yeah, like I said, I I just think of a mistake, uh because again, the uh, what are the three hundred, I mean, eighty-five thousand?
Alright.
That's getting more than that.
I mean, just on that and I understand it's a mistake and I understand the math, math's out, but should we be concerned about other things that have been not appropriately allocated to a particular line item?
Um I would not, uh again, because there's, I mean, the total, I think that's just an error. Uh it's a mistake on that, on that one. And that was made by the budget officer, that wasn't something that was submitted to us. That would have been a mistake that's made in the budget office.
So understand these basically net to zero. However, are these estimates for revenue based on actuals from prior year? Or how are we coming up with these estimates?
Which one, revenue now?
Mm-hmm. Because they're netting to zero and I'm hoping that these are true numbers for expenses.
Yes.
But where, are the revenues consistent with prior year or historical or?
It's it's based on, on, some of them are based on, for example, I've talked about the stu- the student athletic fee. That's based on the revenue generated from headcount, based off of headcount or enrollment. Uh the um guarantees should be based on actual guaranteed contracts that we have in hand. Others are based on, yes, on historical um values. So, you know, you know, one year we had, well, I guess I was not twenty-four, I thought about the game, we had another game. We had a million dollars in guarantees that particular year and it went right back down because that game was no longer. Any, any other questions? Okay, so after athletics, again, this goes right into the um um ag units. So the first one you had is McMenville Nursery Crop Research Station. The primary thing on all of these ag units is we did something different when we did the budget. Uh like I said, with the help of the uh TBR. On the expenditures for these particular budgets, we used to, any money they had leftover, we would plug it in as part of the budget. So for TBRs that, we probably need to just budget what they're going to spend this year and the remaining amount goes into fund balance. So if you look at these fund balances on all of these, you know, that July number is, you know, a smaller number. But then the October number is a much, much larger number. That's because we're now going to uh increasing the fund budget, the fund balance rather than putting that money out there to be spent. And so again, all of those are pretty much the same thing. If you have any questions on any of those, um I will be glad to answer those.
On the ag budgets, is this where you see the match come coming in?
These dollars are the match.
These are only the match dollars?
Yes, the federal side is not included in here, this is just the state side and appropriations.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
But this overall, can I go back to the very beginning?
Yes, yes.
My my question, I know you said that the revenue was based or was based on FTEs.
Mm-hmm.
Did that include the expectation based on what we just heard with the enrollment drop?
No, it, no, it did not.
Okay.
What it was based on, it was based on FTE of fifty-six thirty-nine and we took that. Typically, we have a twenty percent drop from fall to spring. So we took the that amount that for one semester, the fifty-six thirty-nine times the D rate for uh for fifteen hours and we took that times one point eight. So that allows for eighty percent or twenty percent decrease in enrollment for the second, for the spring semester.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have, you know, just like what we just saw, they did a conservative estimate of whatever that four thousand dollar, four thousand student amount and then they did with the higher level of estimate. Did y'all do that with the varying levels that we just saw?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Going back to the summary of expenditures, on the original budget, the institutional support, which I believe those are functional departments, correct, like finance, accounting?
Yes.
HR, et cetera.
Well, yes, instruction and and so all those, your name would be in the same uh institutional support category.
Right, so administrative administrative staff. And that original budget was at roughly eighteen, nineteen million.
Mm-hmm.
The revised budget is at twenty-three million, so that's a a variance of plus four point six.
Right.
So how do we reconcile that with understanding that there have been cuts?
So along with the cuts, we had to make cuts, we also, we went through on every account or every org, we went through and did a a deep dive for the last five years. And what we found is some of the things we had budgeted currently were under budgeted, some things were, you know, budgeted too high. So we had to go in and add money to some budgets to get them to come out to to be realistic into what we actually think is going to take place.
And then also on the scholarships and fellowships. And then also on the scholarships and fellowships with that increase, how should we reconcile that with the reduced enrollment?
As I stated, that July number.
Just pulled out of thin air?
I would say it was pulled out of thin air, but it's not a good number. The number we have here is much more reliable, and it is, I believe it to be a hundred percent accurate.
And then, you mentioned.
Well, I simply a hundred percent accurate, I mean, there's gonna be some variance, but, I mean, I believe that's a much closer estimate than a one from July.
Okay. And I have a, you mentioned this earlier, and it's a detailed question, I understand if you don't have the exact figures, but you mentioned the JLL contract being under the operation and maintenance of plant.
Mm hmm.
When did that JLL contract go into effect?
I think this is the second year.
Do you know what the difference was before the expense for the services provided under that contract that I assume the university provided itself versus the amount that's being paid to JLL?
No, let me, let me make sure I understand the question. Before JLL came aboard, you mean, and after, basically?
Alright, what's the delta?
Actually, I don't, I mean, we can find that, it won't be difficult at all, but I don't know off the top of my head.
We can probably answer that with the facilities director here, he has the detail.
Okay. Good afternoon, Will Rad for Assistant Vice President, Plan and Design Construction, as well as Operations and Maintenance. What was your question?
So the question was the delta between the expenses the university incurred for services that are provided under the JLL contract versus what we're actually paying under the JLL contract now.
So what did TSU pay for facilities before JLL? What does it pay now?
Correct.
So unfortunately, we don't have those exact numbers. The JLL baseline was twelve point six million dollars, which was what it believed TSU paid before it arrived.
So there's just no way to reconstruct what that cost us internally, or?
What this, well, two things, one, the level of service before JLL was maintaining operation at best. The presence of JLL was curing functional deficiencies, and it's tremendous difference of service. So if we're talking at the level, which is for educational facilities, one is the best, five is the worst. We're operating at five before JLL. We have a standard of three with JLL. So it's not apples and apples to say what did they do versus what did we do. We paid a number that was primarily salaries and then buying materials that we could afford past the salaries before twenty twenty two. Once JLL came in the picture, there was a set aside amount of money that said we have money for materials and labor, which allows JLL to perform at a level that TSU couldn't. And I say couldn't in that there was not money identified previously, based on the research that I've done, that said these fifty people have X number of dollars to cure deficiencies on campus. It was more of these fifty people have budget for their salaries and for the minimum service required to keep the campus functional. So it's not true apples and apples comparison. Any other questions on that?
Clear.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In terms of resources that helped put together the budget, did we have any outside?
Yes.
Help with that?
Yes.
Would that be the, I'm gonna go ahead, TBR?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'll name it, Alicia Fox from TBR, Valerie Goober from TBR, and Kiana Smith and our budget office. So the four of us put all this together. We scrubbed, uh, you know, at least over the last five years to see about how the expenditure should look. We went and checked fund balances, matter of fact, that's how we came up with this. This ugly fund balance in the beginning of the year, uh, that negative thirty million dollars. And so that's from going through and scrubbing and taking all the fund balances and making adjustments where they need to be made. And that's how we came up with that huge, uh, thirty million dollar, uh, number. At the end of, at the end of twenty four, of course, beginning of twenty five.
And the TBR has to ultimately approve this budget?
Yes, this budget has been sent to TBR, they have sent back a couple of questions, uh, which is normal. And we submit those, turn those back, and they should approve the budget.
And the time frame for?
Time frame for?
You know, providing approval is when?
Um, I think they, December, it's like, like December second or something that they want everything back. I mean, once they approve it, once they approve it, they want us to send, you know, a finished version of this and the analysis. And I think it's due like in December.
That's consistent, that's consistent with what I heard, I just wish tossing all that out there for everybody.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just to confirm, we don't have any actual numbers to compare for fiscal year?
Yes, we, we actually do, the actual budget actually has a, a, a last year actual column. And I can get that on to you, but it has an actual column, and then the July column, and then the October column. So, yeah. I, yeah, we can, we can, I can get that to you, yes. We have, we get this now today. Now, do you want to own all, all the budgets or just TSU? All of them?
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I don't think we're gonna take a vote to approve that today. So if you can get that, Madam Chair, I would recommend that we have an opportunity for you to come back tomorrow, have that discussion with the new information, and then determine if we're ready to approve.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we got the last presentation for the committee.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I had another question, and I think I missed it somewhere, but it should be easy. For the vendors that we owe outstanding, what's our plan for catching up on a lot of the vendors that we owe?
We, um, look at all of the vendors based on the, um, priority within thirty days. You know, when you get an invoice, they give you a deadline for making the payments. We use our A and M folks in conjunction with our general accounting staff to come up with that listing of outstanding invoices, like today, where we just found out that we had the thirty two million dollars in our account. Right away, they run a listing of those invoices that will be processed and not impact our payroll, which is due next week. So all of those different elements goes into decisions as to how and when we pay all of the invoices with payroll, both mid-year as well as end of year being the priority. And then we work either in a first in, first out, or giving the criticality of the invoice in how we go about paying those. A lot of times, we reach out and talk to some of the vendors to see if we can get a delay in making those payments. But now that we've gotten those additional resources, we should be able to move pretty well along the road. Uh, if nothing else pops up, that's a big dollar value. But right now, we have a forecast, we run a projection, we meet on a weekly basis with the staff, we collect all those invoices, and we make a decision based on how we would go about paying those bills in, in relationship with the money that we have in the bank.
Do you have an idea, and I think you probably said this, but what's the total that we have outstanding in invoices? What do we owe vendors?
That's a good question. Is Bo here? I'm usually looking at it from a dollar perspective, but total invoices.
We can get you that number, I just don't know off the top of my head. Uh, but to answer your question, we, we are, as, as Dr. Burnett, we've been living in this world of day to day cash management. It's a daily triage of cash. Now that we've received some funds from the thirty two million dollars, now we are organizing a process by which we are looking at, let's take all the invoices that we have in the system, which I don't think are many are, you know, much beyond forty five days, if thirty. I mean, we, we, we work to get them caught up and get some of the old stuff out of the system that we have within our system. And so now, as he, as, as Dr. Burnett mentioned, uh, we're organizing a process to clear out some of that.
You don't mean just the big vendors, these are small, like five, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, no, it's gonna be, it's all, it's all vendors, all that we have invoices for, that's right.
Do we have an idea about POs?
Yes, um, the POs, as you know, begins at the, um, the beginning process before the service is rendered. And then after the service is rendered is when we actually get the invoice. So we are using the requisition process for practically everything, from buying a pencil or pen from Staples to paying the Arrowmark contract, which is millions and millions of dollars. But yes, we do have a PO system that we're utilizing. You okay?
Alright, thank you. Our next agenda item, Institutional Development Report. Dr. Tony?
Yes. Good afternoon. So for the Institutional Advancement Report, um, our current donations that we have received, uh, year to date as of November eighteenth is, uh, two million, three hundred ninety nine thousand, seven hundred fifty eight dollars and ninety six cents. This is, um, tracking below this time last year by about six hundred and twenty one thousand dollars and seventy, six hundred twenty one thousand, seven hundred fifty five dollars and fifty cents. The biggest decline right now is in Corps and Foundation. But as I go through, you will see we do have some other things in the pipeline for that. The expected donations by end of week, this week, we have a check presentation tomorrow, actually for a hundred thousand dollars. So we, the team is working, so this week end, we're looking at about a hundred and seventy five in addition to what we have listed here. Although we are currently tracking, um, behind this time last year, the good news is that our alumni giving has increased. It is currently up almost sixty five thousand dollars. And that is a, it has not been in a, in a, it's been in a constant decline since about twenty nineteen. So this is the first time we're starting to see a positive uptick in our alumni giving, which is a really good thing because this is one of the areas that President Johnson, um, has said is a priority for us, is the alignment and engagement with our alumni. From Homecoming, this was mentioned, so from Homecoming, uh, we raised a hundred and ninety two thousand, four hundred four dollars. And then we did another seventy six thousand at the Howard game with a, with a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship. So in those two weeks, we were able to, um, raise two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars and apply a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand of that towards the gap support. What makes that unique is that traditionally at Homecoming, we do not have, um, organized fundraiser, fundraising efforts, and we did this year. So it was a paradigm shift, yet, uh, we, um, were able to get the engagement of our alums on that. So our fiscal year twenty five goal is ten million dollars. Uh, we have a five point eight million dollar, uh, close the gap goal. As has been mentioned, uh, my office, working with Dr. Burnett's office and President Johnson, were able to identify a little over three million dollars of foundational resources that can be utilized, um, for these efforts. We also have a year end goal of one point one million. Last year, we raised one million dollars in year end. So this is a slight uptick in that, but it is, it is strategically focused on the closing the gap. We have our Giving Tuesday goal, which is five hundred. And we have upcoming, um, on December the fourteenth, we have a, uh, Chicago fundraising goal of two fifty. We have an alum that is hosting a fundraiser in her home, um, and that has a hundred thousand dollar, uh, goal to that. And then we have other meetings scheduled for President Johnson, along with myself and staff, that weekend for, to, uh, make up the additional one figure that we, for that weekend. We've also brought back, um, class reunions, so we haven't done class reunions since before the pandemic. So we brought back class reunions, and so they will be recognized in May, where we normally do our vinegers. So these are the classes that end in zeros and fives. And so that, um, that initiative has a one million doll, one million dollar goal as well, well. So part of, um, Dr. Johnson's vision of achieving the, um, closing the gap is the trajectory, um, uh, uh, challenge initiative. And so it has a three-pronged, I mean, a five-pronged approach to it. It is the alumni engagement. So together, uh, myself, Katrina Kerr, who is the President of TSU National Alumni Association, and Valerie Love, who is the Board Chair for the Foundation, are working together to really galvanize and, um, engage alumni to drive participation, which includes recruiting as well as giving, because we want our alums also involved in the recruitment of, um, our students. And so to do this, we're utilizing, um, some strategic communication and training. So we were provided a roadmap that was used, that was developed in another institution for us to be able to roll out a grassroots effort of how to engage alumni around recruitment and around giving. Uh, we've also, um, started to work with the, um, National Alumni Association President to schedule, um, meetings around what we call a five-side chats, which would be with the chapter president, so that it really becomes a cascading grassroots approach. But we're all seeing it out of the same hymn, though, we're all saying the, the same thing. And so that we can ensure that when we are recruiting students, we are recruiting what is the prototype, which is what's being developed out of our Office of Enrollment, and that we have students that will clearly have success. So that includes those talking points. And so in addition to that, uh, we have also added a dedicated estate, um, planning, uh, fundraiser. And so one of the things we're working to do to, is educate, um, alums on how to leave their legacy. So a big part of the, um, funds that were identified from the foundation to help support, um, the gap came from an estate gift. And estate, the estate gift was not directly an alum, it was the son of, of, of an alum who wanted to leave that legacy, um, for his mom. So, um, again, part of this is, is regional, um, competitions and incentives, so you will start to see those things rolling out. Our office has been having conversations with several alumni who want to, um, find, uh, need support in, um, how they can galvanize their friends, their classmates around giving. And so that's what we're doing, um, as well. So there's a lot, I think you may have seen, you know, uncut, where people are making the call for giving at a, at a hundred thousand. So my office works with them to really try to put some structure with that and make sure that it aligns with what we're doing out of our office at the university. Part two of this, of the TCI, is the connection to industry, so partner engagement. And so it is imperative that we build strong career pipelines, um, for our students and for our alumni. So one of the taglines that we, that we use is future ready, and to, um, be more, we have to do more. So we really have to leverage our current partnerships. So engaging our partners, um, to create these development opportunities. President Johnson has the vision also of us creating basically a, um, think tank with partners where, um, they, where they could come and do some, uh, research, basically like a research institution. And so we have started with some of those conversations. And so if you were with us in DC, you saw Wells Fargo, who was a partner that immediately stepped up after, um, hearing President Johnson's, uh, one hundred day plan and said, how can we help? And so that's why the fundraiser was hosted. And so we are also doing another, um, event partner program with them here on campus in January. And they are also interested in talking about, um, the research piece. Uh, we also have to cultivate new industry connections, which is, um, something that the team is working very hard to do. So while we're in Chicago, um, so President Johnson will join us on Saturday, but on Friday, um, there will be meetings with foundations and corporations that have been identified in that space. And we've also taken the step to identify any alumni. And we've also taken the step to identify any alumni that are also part of those organizations, to include them in those conversations. The third piece is the communications, so that it's streamlined and consistent. We want to make sure that we keep everyone updated and that we are, again, speaking out of the same hymnal. So we are really encouraging alums through a current initiative that we have to do the But For TSU, and so that's that impact statement. So when we think about But For TSU, we think about like our Jesse Russells or our Clarice Phelps. But For TSU, would we not have that, that additional element? Or But For TSU, would we not have, what we now enjoy as the cellphone? Because those two are products of this great learning institution. And so as part of that too, with the, an advisory of communications between, again, the university, the foundation, and the Alumni Association. And then the fifth part of that is our stewardship. So to make sure that we cultivate and acknowledge our donor relationships, that's a very important thing. You know, we hear that, that people say they haven't heard from us, or that they're not getting their reports. So we really want to make sure that we are connected on that. And so thanks to the Foundation Board and Foundation Board member Leiron, we are working to have a fundraising system. So we're working to install Blackbaud, I think, we, we will, we're looking at the top of 2025. So with that has come into digitization of our files, which means that we will have better access to donor information, records, and reporting. And it also creates the continuity of the giving cycle. So we're very grateful for that partnership. So as we continue throughout the year, we, I am continuing to have deep dive conversations with each fundraiser. So we've just done a mid-year checkpoint on goals, to talk about pipeline, and those constructive conversations about how we move gifts to close, and how are we getting to our goals. So you see in the report, we have our year-end giving campaign, we also have our reunion campaigns, and I partner with our chapters, because we really cannot do this without that. We also have other key partner meetings that we are scheduling with President Johnson, donors, and other members of the cabinet. So in addition to that, we have launched a program with Big Brothers, Big Sisters as an opportunity for alumni mentoring with students, because we really want alums to be engaged. Writing the check is wonderful, but we want you to be involved, want you to come on campus. We want you to be engaged with what's happening with the students and what's going on in the classrooms. We are also working on our alumni magazine. I know it's been a few years since we've had that out, but we are working with a partner to get that out by top of the year, so that, again, we can continue with our communications. So, I'll entertain questions.
Tyler had a question earlier than maybe now would be good to ask again. Sorry, I caught you awkwardly.
No, no, you're good, you're good. Um, oh, okay, I have it written down, my apologies. How you doing today?
I'm well.
Good to hear. Um, so my question is, um, it was this emphasis on progression, right? So I know we're discussing here, or I think we're discussing the last PowerPoint, enrollment management, attention, things of that.
I'm sorry, it's the institutional development. You had a question earlier about, when we were talking about gifts to the school, and then I think you had asked a question about a certain person's participation in encouraging gifts to the school or donors to the school.
Got you, okay, thank you, thank you, sorry about that. Um, so, okay, so to my knowledge, um, the role of President Emeritus and previous President Glenn Glover here at the institution currently is supposed to be that of a role that helps, I guess, raise money for the school, to my knowledge. Now, if that's incorrect, please correct me, but that's what I've been told. And so if that is the case, um, do we have any, like, do, do we have any support from her, perhaps her team, if she has one? And if so, how has that kind of shaped some of the strategies that we're doing here in regard to raising funds, in regard to alumni raising, but also just getting money from other sources? Do we have any data on that? Do we have any anecdotes on that, things of that nature? So thank you for the correction. Sorry, y'all, I'm trying to, trying to enjoy my deal, but thank you.
It's okay. Uh, thank you for that question, trustee Vasquez. So, um, of course, we're always, you know, open to recruitment and fundraising help from a multitude of resources. And we are very grateful for President Glover, President Glover's service and, and her assistance. And of course, a lot of, some of the conversations that we're having now, of course, started during her 10 years president. I cannot speak to what is in her agreement and what she is tasked to do, but I am sure that she is always speaking loudly and proudly about Tennessee State University and the support that is needed.
Thank you, thank you, because, because that matters, you know, just as much as the actual monetary support. And having those, having our names and having the name of Tennessee State actually in, you know, places where we're not necessarily privy to as a board, I think is still important as well, so thank you for that.
I would just add that, um, you know, Dr. Glover has a number of relationships, and, and she has shared those relationships with the institution even since she's left. And as a consequence, a lot of follow-up has been done to cultivate those, those relationships.
So very quickly, when we talk about partnerships to help raise money for the institution, what kind of partnerships do you have with the individual units at the institution in order to provide resources so that they can solicit money from graduates and other connections that they have with the community, the types of resources that you have available for the different units?
So, um, naturally, when we're speaking with a partner, and there, if there's a particular area that is more aligned with their interest of support, then we always bring them in. Usually, I start with Dr. Melton, and then she will help direct me to the academic unit and academic individuals. So we work very closely, even with gifts that are already in. And if there are challenges with the delivery with the partners or understanding, yesterday, we were working with College of Engineering on one of their large gifts and getting some clarity around that. So we, we sometimes go to the, go to the department, sometimes they come to us. But we're always open, and in fact, one of my team, team members did the, I think she was doing the faculty, I think the faculty senate met today, and then she's got scheduled the, the staff senate committee meeting, which she'll be presenting as well.
So more specifically, so each unit has a number of graduates, hopefully that number will increase over time. How, do you have resources to help the units track their graduates with recent or up-to-date address information so that they can reach out to their graduates to solicit funds for the university?
We do not. That's what, coming in January with the new system software, that will help us. Because right now, what we have to do is kind of go back to the units and ask them to help us too, to try to shore up the data. But with the digitization of the documents and the cleaning of the data with the import of the new system, that will allow us to have that, because we will have more accurate data at our, at our hand, at our fingertips. So if a unit were to reach out and say, "I want to know all of the engineering graduates in Chicago," then we would be able to do that at that point.
I would just add that, um, what Dr. Tony's talking about is really the tremendous work contribution from Laren Walker, who is a member of the Foundation Board. He's taken, uh, taken a lot of his time and energy to make this happen. And then, of course, the board itself has allocated funds for us to get updated software. So Laren is actually really a critical piece in this equation. He has actually helped us also in establishing the framework for the, for the collection of funds for Close the Gap. So this is, again, a case where our collaboration has leveraged our ability to move forward.
I have a question. Uh, these are all great, I'm excited about all of this effort, but beyond this, because this kind of feels like emergent kind of plans, what is the strategic plan for maybe three to five years so that we don't have these kind of pop-up fundraisers, that we are doing something that's sustainable?
So, um, that was done, when I was hired by President Glover, I did a five-year plan. And that was modified based upon the vision and, and the priorities that she wanted me to focus on. With the transition to President Johnson, there was a shift in that, in those priorities. So, and I'm sure that we get the, the, when I, when we get our full-time president next year, there'll probably be a shift, and so at that point, then we'll do another three to five years. So, um, because, um, there is that shift in what the focus and the priorities have become, so President Glover did not have the gap as the priority for which he wanted us to focus our attention on, that, that shifted this year. So, but we do have, I do have a strategic plan that I can share with you that I, that I did for President Glover that was for a three-year plan.
Well, I guess, I think the goal is always sustainable fundraising. We can call it Close the Gap, we can call it Build a Bridge, we can call it whatever from year to year. But I think the baseline would almost stay the same, right?
Not really. So President Johnson has more of a focus on us having more unrestricted dollars. President Glover was very clear to me, she wanted me to focus strictly on scholarships. And so that's that shift, so it, so you even see the shift even in the conversation. So even in our conversations around gifts, if you want to give an endowed scholarship, that's wonderful, but we also need you to contribute annually too. So it's, that's, that's that slight tweak in it.
I have a question.
Just want to add, so that, so that it's understood. We, we are, we are not shifting from, you know, fundraising. What we're doing is we're looking at enhanced fundraising. So if someone comes and says they want to give us $50,000, or we were in settings where people actually wrote a check, okay? Then we would say, "Well, if you give us $50,000 for an endowment, we don't see really the, the benefit from that for three years." Because the, the, the full benefit for three years, because we have to, um, we use the 12-quarter, it's, what is called the, the Yale model, for calculating how you get paid out of earnings. So we're sitting here, we've got the students here. And so what we talk about now is that if you give a $50,000 scholarship, can you actually give us the cash along with that, that we would have gotten had we had the cash, until we get to the point where we collect the full amount? So it's, it's not really a shift. However, this is something that for whomever comes in here can actually take and use as a foundation for a five-year plan, five-year, because fundraising is essentially engagement. And so the idea of engaging our alums, working with our alums to develop a two-way communication system, working with the alums so that we understand that the level of stewardship needs to be built up. All of those things are the foundational elements for a full-fledged plan.
Quick question. The $10 million, how did we arrive at that as the goal?
Based upon prior year's giving and what we forecasted that we could add on to that, given our fundraisers and their experience.
So forecast, so prior year, and then forecast through?
Through, based upon what we felt was in the pipeline and what we had as far as experience on the bench to be able to achieve those goals.
But do we know that the $10 million to be enough?
So, um, I, I believe that it is. I mean, it was part of the plan. And so when, um, because we were raising like 8 million before, and I think last year without the gift, we, we got to about, the gift got us to 12, so we raised about nine, um, without the gift. So based upon the projections that I did, and President Glover felt like too, that it was okay, that it was enough for, for what we needed. I think also as we clean up our, our data, we will have even better information for our projections.
I ask that question because we've shared a lot of information, I mean, you know, around where we are fiscally. And if we're looking at basically staying somewhat flat, it's a little bump, but knowing that we have, when we talk about Close the Gap, the gap is much larger than what was anticipated when some of those projections were done. So as you're continuing to clean up the data, I would suggest that you might want to do a check-in.
Okay.
Ninety days, six months, to see if 10 million is really enough.
Yeah, I, I, I totally agree with you. I think we also need to add to our bench too. So we don't have a annual fund director, we lost our annual fund director earlier this year. So staff have, you know, have, we've added that on to others, others' plates. So unlike some institutions that have those additional skill sets to help with that, we are, we're, we're a little low right now, but we can certainly check in and provide updates.
Is the annual fund director posted?
It is not posted.
Just a follow-up question.
Yes.
In terms of the media coverage around the current financial situation with Tennessee State, is there an opportunity to open up well beyond our alumni to reach out to the broader Nashville city in total? And I'm sure there's a lot of people out there who would like to give to Tennessee State based on what they heard to help our institution be sustainable.
Yeah, so actually, and we do, so part of, I'm sure part of this also, some of the things that Kelly and her team are working on, but from our office, we do two pieces of communication. So we do communication that's specifically to alumni, and then we do communication that's to alumni and friends. And so as President Johnson mentions about engagement, so we're always trying to bring more people in and introduce them. So, um, yes, we, we definitely want our friends to support us. In fact, a tremendous amount of our, some of our large gifts come from our friends, including tomorrow's check is coming from, coming from friends. So yes, we absolutely want the larger community support.
Any other questions for, go ahead. I have a couple of questions, and these may be more for Dr. Burnett, unless you have some insight. And looking at some of the financial statements that we received for the fiscal year '24, and just looking at the foundation as a component unit, I see that the gifts and contributions, the final tally at least submitted, I think these were submitted to TBR, was 10.4 million, 4 million of that would have been the, the gift. I also see on here an expense item of payments to suppliers and vendors of 4.3 million. Do you know what that would be?
I don't know. So I don't, um, I think it's the Foundation Board that makes those decisions on those expenses, is that correct? Yeah, I don't have, I don't have, I don't, I don't make those decisions, so I'm, I'm not sure. And you probably actually don't see the gift there, because the gift was not actually recorded until July, the gift came in in December, it was recorded in July when the stock transfer happened. And so, and then it was on suspense. And so when we pulled the suspense report, that's when I shared that with Dr. Dr. Burnett and Dr. Johnson, and with Leilak and Valerie Love, that, that those funds were there.
And so for that 4.3, what you're saying is that the foundation would have knowledge and should have knowledge
Yes, yes.
where that money was being paid out. Okay.
I have a couple of questions, is it okay, Chair?
Go ahead.
All right. You mentioned early, they're softball questions, don't worry. You mentioned earlier that you were using a model from another institution to kind of help understand your fundraising, or?
It's the alumni engagement tool.
Alumni engagement tool? Okay. So that answered that question. The second question was the Giving Tuesday goal of 500,000, how did you come about that goal? Because, let me, here's my second part.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
With Giving Tuesday, which is a large audience, is 500,000. There's a Chicago fundraising goal of 250, which is about half of that. How did you arrive at the 500 number?
So it was to save our seniors portion. So President Johnson shared a breakdown of what was needed, when and where. And so we took that and broke it down with what we thought we could do. And again, as I mentioned, we have other groups, other, other alums who have come in and said, I want to do a fundraiser too. So that's how we came to, to that number is to save our seniors. Now, might we, we, we might not hit the 500. I mean, that is our goal and that is to- totally our intent, and I'm believing that we will. But that is our goal and that's the goal that we're communicating that we want to hit.
So Giving Tuesdays are pretty large and known fundraising effort across the way. Is there any thought of somehow taking our current financial state and grouping it with the Giving Tuesday, messaging that to have people give and support TSU? Have you thought about that?
So you're talking about the, when you say, when you were, I, I, I'm, I'm not following anything what you were saying or your point over here.
Giving Tuesday is coming up. Right now, you're only taking Giving Tuesday $500,000 to support seniors. Well, given what we and where we are financially, there are people all across the country, they're not the world, that may want to contribute. Have you looked at expanding the Giving Tuesday?
Oh, it's a national campaign. So, so it's a national campaign that we, actually I, I wrote the strategy for it, so that is being executed. So it's again, not just to TSU alum, but to TSU, I mean, to, to anyone that wants to support. So, and in addition to that, so a part, a component of that too also includes a phone banking where we're?
Maybe I'm not being clear.
Okay.
So $500,000 is our Giving Tuesday campaign to help seniors. Is there any other way to expand and take advantage of a Giving Tuesday while people are giving? And maybe increase the amount that we're giving, not just for the seniors and that amount? Somebody help me because I must not be the end.
Well, understanding that part of President Johnson's goal is really looking for unrestricted dollars, taking Giving Tuesday as an opportunity to increase that goal and changing the messaging, I think is where she's going.
Yes, so, so we're using the messaging of future-ready TSU. So, so we're showing how alums and our students have become future-ready, and that's part of our campaign for Giving Tuesday. So it's, we just took, we, what I, what I took was that 5.8 million, and I broke it into different campaigns of which we could set to try to achieve those amounts. And so for the Giving Tuesday piece, I took the Save Our Seniors because it is right, it is right before the fall commencement, and it is the most urgent money that's needed. I think it's what, December 13th, 15th, something like that, President Johnson. So it, so it's, it's not that we're not looking at the whole piece. It's just for this particular campaign, that's where we're targeting. Does that, does that make sense in my answer to the question?
Maybe I, maybe I can help. In investments, investors are habitat investors. There are people who invest in real estate, there are people who invest in oil and gas, and donors are investors. And so they invest in habitats. Some people want to invest in the band, others want to invest in football, others want to invest in engineering. And so the whole idea of this process is to actually tailor your campaigns to the habitats that are, that you have, that you can actually be able to demonstrate to what Dr. Tony said. But for TSU, you wouldn't actually have this benefit. And so that's the whole idea. So you're building up a portfolio that's tied to how people make their donations. Having an open campaign that says, save TSU, people will say, for what? Investors say, but for this, that's why we give you the money.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I think more of what Dr. Claus is saying, take away, save our seniors. That's no different than saying, save TSU. But it's really focusing in on TSU future-ready and the positive message for Giving Tuesday, not just your overall.
Yeah, that, and that's exactly what it is.
She's really talking about Giving Tuesday, increasing the goal, focusing in on future-ready, removing the subliminal restriction of save our seniors.
Yeah, so it is, it's, the language says fut- future-ready. It says, let me see, I just, I have it up here with me. Yeah, so it's future-ready TSU, stand with TSU. And so what it is, is the, what, what we have going is some core messaging that says, I stand with TSU because TSU stood with me. And so that's a part of the alumni language that's messaging that's in there. So we have, as a result of recent communications, there are a number of people who want to say, how can I help? What can I do? We want to raise money, we want to do this, we want to do that. So this is a way for us to really try to corral that and put it in a structured, organized fashion. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, some people, like even for homecoming, some people have a, a passion for the band. So they gave their money, it's can be used for gap, but it's for band students. So inevitably, in those students, there, I mean, in, yeah, in the cadre of students, there are students that are part of the band that need that gap support. It can still be used, utilized for that, but maybe they, but it's just for those students. And there's some others in there like that. So I hope that's a little clearer.
And we increased the goal from 500,000? Giving Tuesday is a big giving day. Do you think 500,000 is too low?
Well, so I would also invite support in us doing that. I mean, we are doing a phone bank too that day. So we haven't done a phone bank in a while on all of our lapsed donors to try to get them also to support. And again, and we're particularly looking at lapsed donors that are one-year lapsed. So this time last year, you were here. We miss you, come back, so.
Have we ever raised 500,000 in one day?
In one day? So Giving Tuesday, two years ago, we hit a milestone, and it was right at 200. So this is a big push, and that's why we're doing the phone banking and other efforts to try to bring in more and create the.
Can I just echo on that?
Yes.
Which is my question. Can you give to us a review of the last 10 years' worth of gifts? Because I think if we could see what the, what we have received in for the past 10 years, we can really start to think about what's realistic for what's in the future. And then just to follow up on one point, graduation is December the 7th.
Yes. Happily, actually, I just pulled that for Dr. Goldman. I will say there is a break in that there was about a three, two to three-year point where we were not doing active fundraising. So you will see that, that's where we start to see the decline in our alumni giving. So now we're starting to tread, tread back up. But I, I actually have those reports because I just pulled them.
Fabulous, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm stuck on this 4.3 million expense because I'm, I'm just thinking about, we have this conversation about these targets and what we want to raise. But if we're bringing in 10 million and then we're spending 4 million, or 4.3, and you can't answer where the 4.3 is going?
No, because I don't have any access. I can't spend foundation money, so I don't know what it's been for.
So is there a foundation accounted? Does the foundation have a finance staff or?
Yeah, I think the foundation board.
Who provides?
Yeah, the foundation board manages that piece, so.
Oh, the foundation board has its own finance and accounting staff? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, mhm. Yeah.
And are they university employees or foundation employees?
Both. We, they're all.
The foundation has that?
University employees or university employees?
Yeah, university employee.
Only university employees.
So if they're university employees, how, how do you not know where the 4.3 million is going?
These financials were developed in the expenditures last year. I wouldn't know it. I just submitted it. But I will take an action item and, and really get that information and share it with you. That's what I wanted to say.
Because I just want to make, I mean, if we're trying to maximize gifts.
Yes.
How are we maximizing gifts if we're spending 4.3 to get? I mean, it's still a decent return, but it seems like if, if no one can answer where the 4.3 is going.
That's a very valid question. I just can't recreate what happened prior to my arrival. But I would definitely look into the, that should be a documented entry in our county, and I'll be able to provide you with that information.
Are any institutional development expenses, so there, none of those expenses are in the foundation expenses?
Well, one more question. In terms of the prior trustees, were there some expectation that the team around the table was going to contribute to the yearly goal?
So for, for me, yes. But the prior trustees, some did contribute in a, in a myriad of ways. As you know, like Bishop Walker, his church does HBCU Sunday, and you know, so there was a $100,000 gift from that. So there's a myriad of ways, and I'm happy to have one-on-one conversations with trustees about how they would like to support the institution.
Here's my last one that I didn't finish from before.
All right.
So alumni, we talk about alumni a lot, and we've heard over the years, the two separate systems. So there's alumni relations, and then there's the alumni association. And people say, well, I don't get information, how can I get information? But they don't realize that we actually are two separate systems. Has there been any discussion on merging the two or more collaboration between the two?
So that's part of the TCI is for our collaboration around communication. That's actually, I think, point four.
It's different than communication. It is actually having, if you look at models, I don't know if you've had, looked at models across some of our schools, have alumni relations on the university side and what we would traditionally call alumni associations. They're all under one type of umbrella. Have we looked at any of those models and seen how it could benefit TSU becoming more efficient or anything?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer. I'd have to get back to you on that answer. But I know we, we're, we're working together collaboratively. But as far as that, the alumni, the Director of Alumni Relations is on TSU Alumni Association Board. So that, so Alumni Relations is at the table.
Right, but in terms of talking to people, I know Dr. Burnett often says that Banner is, we have the Cadillac version of Banner. So as we're trying to reach our alumni, if we go through the Alumni Association, the Alumni Association more so opt-in. So the only way that you get information from them is if you share your information with them. If it were on the university side with Banner, that's all of us. And we would be able to have a greater outreach to our alumni. That was my question in terms of, you know, collaborating. It, it may cause a lot of angst among some of the alumni, thinking that, oh, you're going to destroy our Alumni Association. But as we're moving towards efficiency, are we looking at those models as well?
So we do.
Maybe I should, because that question actually can lead to a lot of hysteria, and it's actually a question that the board would actually address. At Stanford, the Alumni Association is part of the university. Currently, what's going on at CAU, that because of something that was going on between the Alumni Association, they are establishing the Alumni Association at the university. That's a very, very controversial issue. And if the board wants to consider that, then that should be something that is separate from this dialogue, which is talking about fundraising as part of financial, as part of the financial situation in the university.
Well, actually, Dr. Johnson, it is relevant because it would be a way for us to reach more alumni effectively.
Right, but that's a discussion for the board to make because that is a major change in the relationship between the alumni and the university.
Did anyone have any? Okay. I guess kind of like bouncing off of trustee Tucker's point, how you were asking about like previous, previous trustees and if they contributed in any way. I guess maybe a suggestion for all of us here on the board, knowing that Giving Tuesday is coming up, maybe we could have like some kind of like promotional campaign as a board. One thing I've seen a lot of, a lot of the TSU community reach out about is, well, what is the board's thoughts on this? Or, and obviously, there's certain ways that we have to go about communication. But even if we did a campaign where it's like, okay, well, all 10 of us recorded a video and said, hey, make sure you give, and make sure you give this much today for Giving Tuesday. You know, I know myself, and you know, I know I have a student trustee page here at the university. I know my personal Instagram. I know some of y'all might have LinkedIn, Facebook, things of that nature. Even like a social media post of trustee Winston saying, hey, y'all, make sure to give out. I'm a, you know, I'm a TSU alumna, just stuff of that nature.
You know that QR code is, is locked and loaded and ready to go. So anybody that is ready to give, go ahead and give.
So like, if that was something we did, that would not only show the TSU community, hey, we're listening to you all, we care about our university. But additionally, it shows, hey, it's a little bit more fun than maybe the traditional business side of things. It's literally us saying, hey, we're TSU stu-, or TSU student and TSU alum ourselves. We want to be able to give, and we want you to give too. Like, let's say if you said you want to give $50,000, someone match that on my social media and post that. I think people will really find that to be relevant because you all are trustees and you all are TSU alum. They're going to be interested in that. That was just a suggestion more for you all, if that's something y'all were interested in. But I know for myself, if that's something I wanted to go with, I'd be more than happy to participate.
Thank you, trustee.
No, that's cool too.
Nice, we are ending the meeting. Thank you very much, Dr. Tony. Dr. Burnett, our board chair has agreed to start off tomorrow with the update on additional information regarding the budget that we talked about.
Okay.
Okay, so just want to make sure you're, you and your team will be ready for that.
What, what time is it tomorrow?
We start at 10:30, don't we? Uh-oh, I'm glad we went through this.
Well, my, my committee meeting starts at 8:30, and I know that the person that's presenting needs to get out of here. So I want to make sure that I go at 8:30.
Works for me. Madam Chair.
Okay, then you will go, you will go first.
Thank you.
We'll be here, ready to roll.
I see.
Thank you very much. With that, that concludes the finance committee meeting. The meeting to take a motion to, do you have something?
I apologize.
Jim, rather.
I apologize. I just wanted to, I have an answer to trustee Paul's question on the accounts payable.
Oh, go ahead.
So as of Monday, we've totaled accounts payable about 7.7 million. 1.1 of that is 61 days or greater. 2.7 of that is 31 to 60 days. About 3 million is 1 to 30 days. And then we have about 880,000 that's current, considered current. We are, we are right now putting together a schedule. Our plan is at the end of next week or before the Thanksgiving holiday is to pay up, get everyone caught up to the net 30. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want a motion to physically suspend till tomorrow? Yes. Okay.
I move to suspend the finance meeting until, and reconvene tomorrow.
Is there a second? Motion's been moved in second. Do you want to do this or?
You can do a voice vote. Have a go.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
We got academic and student affairs. All right. All right, it is now 5:00. This is the November 21st Student and Academic Affairs Committee Meeting for Tennessee State Board of Trustees. I've now called this meeting to order. Secretary Pennington, will you call the role?
Trustee Northfleet?
Here.
Trustee Terrica Smith?
Here.
Trustee Young Siegler?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Right, thank you, sir. We have a number of items on the agenda. We're going to have approval of TSU policy, governance, institutional accreditation, a report on SAC, COC, and other accreditation matters, as well as retention and academic progress update, and an academic affairs report by Dr. Robbie Milton, the interim VP and Provost, followed by our student affairs report by Dr. Goldman. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Milton for her approval of TSU policy, governance, institutional, and accreditation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman Winston, Board of Trustees, Robbie Melton, serving as the interim Provost. And the first item, okay.
The policy, correct?
Yes, thank you very much. And this is the policy on accreditation. And Chairman Winston, I'm going to ask for this policy that I asked for our SAC, COC, Dr. Anderson for permission, and also Attorney Lawrence Pendleton as the presentation. Thank you.
As the chair of this committee, I will recognize.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, in the chair. Thank you. Go ahead. This is the policy.
This policy is driven by a recent state law that was enacted, and really, the purpose is to have boards, one, identify their accrediting agency, as well as provide policies for, basically, if you want to look to choose a different one, for which you choose it from. So, this policy provides and identifies SACs as the current accrediting body. It's the same accrediting body for most institutions in the South. And, but it allows, if, in the event, let's say the board was looking at, the institution was looking at changing, then the eligible entities that you can choose from, which are listed on the U.S. Department of Education list. And then also prohibits accrediting agencies from compelling public institutions via ed to violate any given state law. So, basically, it codifies, in essence, what the law provides and requires of the institutions. In crafting the policy, we had conversations, discussions with the other LGIs on what they're doing, and, and really developing something that, something that other institutions are looking at as well. So, this policy reflects that. Any questions?
So, this is a state mandate, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any other, okay. So, is there a motion to recommend full board approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The question is on the motion to recommend the full board approval of the TSU policy governing institutional accreditation. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I think we're good on that one.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Dr. Anderson, are you going to provide the report on SAC, COC?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Charlize Anderson. I serve as the Institutional Accreditation Liaison. The university's fifth-year interim report inclusive of the QEP impact report are due to SAC, COC in March of 2026. We are currently in the midst of our self-assessment, and pleased to report that the university is on track with the established timeline. We completed our first draft of the interim report in August, which draft was reviewed by our consultant, Silver and Associates. Based on feedback received, the steering committee is currently working on our second draft. We have set an internal deadline to having a, a good version of the second draft in mid-December, with a final version, draft, second draft completed in February. Our continued timeline is to have a third draft this summer, and a good final draft of the final interim report and QEP impact report in December of 2025. The steering committee continues to meet monthly, and each contributor has met periodically with our consultant as well. That concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you remind us the topic of the QEP, maybe just so everybody is aware?
The topic of the QEP, so the goal is about enhancing and developing a holistic and integrative advising model. So, it's a student success QEP.
So, this is hopeful to help with retention if we model it the right way?
Correct.
Any other questions?
If you, if you don't mind, could you just repeat the consultant's name?
Silver and Associates.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And one more thing.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Just, does the actual draft come to the board, or will we see the final product? How does this work? I just want to make sure that if there's something that we need to be looking in or adding some insight, that we're prepared to do that.
Understood. Whatever the directive and your desire is, we can forward the draft. Currently, or you're saying as we move forward, a copy of each draft?
Whichever one you see.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for your time, Dr. Anderson. Now, we have the retention and academic progress update?
Yes. Again, Robbie Melton, interim Provost. I'm here to give an update regarding the retention progression and where we are. As you know, I presented a plan to you all with activities at the last board meeting. So, I'm here to give you an update as well as where we are. In your addendum, you should have a retention plan. If not, I have copies for you.
Appendix, there?
Yes. And just let me hold up just for your attention. Within that plan, which is being implemented?
We may need those copies.
Okay. And if someone would be so kind to pass. Okay, the email, life is good. We have both. Within that plan, it highlights the activities. Again, just to share with the trustee, my role in terms of academic affairs is to keep them here. So, I'm your retention progression team coming in. There was a question earlier about what are we doing in terms of progression, and I would like to address that. Three weeks ago, we conducted a survey of all first-time freshmen, less than 15 credit hours. If they do not have 15 credit hours, they are already off target. I am here to share with you, we identify 301 freshmen. With that, now that advising, first-year advising is now over into academic affairs, we immediately identified those 301 students. We looked at their CPOTs, degree works, to see what happened. And this, after graduation, we have implemented something called Extreme Winter, Extreme Spring, one-week online courses to get those students back on track, so that they can have the 15 credit hours. We also implemented an Extreme Spring May semester. In other words, we are now able to track all first-time students, freshmen's coming in, to make sure they reach the 30, the 60, the 90, the 120 progression. Not only that, we have identified all students who are on probation. I'm here to share with you, and please to give this number, we have 151. Last year, we had over 500. So, something is happening on the positive side. You will also note within your retention, retention plan, we have a new model that is based on the national model of NACADA, that is aligned, trustee Northfleet with our QEP. We are going into a two-plus-two advising model. So, let me help you. Last year, first-year freshmen stayed with that group, and then they were handed off. That handoff was not good. A lot of students were caught in the gap. Who's my advisor? Where do I go? In the two-plus-two new model, they stay with us. In other words, we don't hand them off until their junior year. Within this timeframe, please know, we now have an alignment with all of the colleges. In conducting a study this semester, only four of our colleges have what we call an intro course, like Intro to Ag, Intro to Biology. So, you all know that if you are not in touch with your college, you're going to soon drop out. With that, we have a plan working with all of the colleges and the department to make sure that every freshman has a touch point every semester with their noted majors. Another change, since I was the last here, all freshmen must declare a major. In other words, once they decide, and of course, they're going to change, life is good, but at least we can give them a program of study and have them, again, aligned with career advising. So, if you would like to go into health sciences, at this point of the freshman, using our orientation course, there is a requirement that they must have a career profile. We has also taken all of our coaches, first-year gen coaches, our women's, men, veterans, online, and moved them all together, and we now call them student success specialists. So, what does this mean, trustee? As a student come to us, they don't have to look and say, where's my coach? Where's my advisor? Or whatever. One person will serve in all of those roles. So, that way, when you come and you have an assigned advisor, that person ha, will have the skill set of coaching, advising, mentoring, and making sure that students are on success. We also have a plan over the break. That's where we lose our students. Yes, when students leave us after graduation and they go home, we know that over 30% of them will not come back, whether it's financial aid or whatever. We have a plan already ready to reach out and have a touch point with them. So, let me stop for questions. Yes?
I have a question. You said something about the men's, the women's, the veterans, those programs are now.
Um, yes. They're now moved over to academic affairs and part of our coaching and advising in this new model. So, each of our student success specialists will have emphasis, like for veterans. You will have a caseload, but you'll have, if you're from the veterans, we bring them in so we can have a sense of belonging and community, learning communities.
So, these were all programs that were just spread under other departments, and now they're all?
Yes, all under one.
All under one?
Yes. So, we pull them from Student Affairs, Enrollment Management, Title III, all of them. So, now they're all under one umbrella.
Okay.
They have multiple roles, though. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Mm-hmm. So, all of them will be student success specialists with various, various emphasis. So, you'll have the men's initiative, women, veterans, online, adult learners, et cetera, et cetera.
Did any of those programs have any kind of specialized, a specialized focus that was working for one? Are they going to be able to share resources?
Yes. So, we're pulling in all of those resources. So, under Student Affairs, let's say they had the Women's Initiative, and they had resources. We're looking at maximizing it so it's across the board, because what we found, they had little pockets. So, where you had initiatives here, you might not have had a group over there. So, we're looking at maximizing and bringing in all resources, so we can address all groups.
And are students required to be a part of these groups?
Look how I said, we would hope so. But as you know, for the sense of belonging, you have to reach out to them. So, with Student Affairs, this is where this new model comes in to play. We want that community of learning. So, as you know, if you're in the band, if you're in football or whatever, you have your groups, and your groups will sustain you. If you're in the choir, we have so many students without a group. So, along with Student Affairs, which AV, I mean VP Goldman will address, we're trying to bring that sense of belonging, so that students will come back.
So, I had a couple of questions about a couple of things that you said. So, you mentioned that there were 301 students that were off-target for graduation, and you've got a plan for those.
Yes.
And then you also identified 151 students that are on probation. Are those freshman students, or they're just 151 students that are all?
All over.
Okay.
Yes.
And then you, you've talked about the system that you have. When will you be able to issue reports that will be able to show us kind of exactly what you're doing?
Yes. Spring, next semester, because remember, and under the old plan, we would hand them off, and that's where the gap would come in. This year, we're not handing them off. So, I should be able to come back to you in the spring to show a difference.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Yeah.
One more thing. I would be interested in all the number of success coaches you have.
Yes.
Because I'm concerned about the sustainability piece of it as well.
Yes. I can give you that number right now. Bringing everyone together, that's your first gen, all of those coaches, your academic coaches, your first-year advisor, men initiative, women initiative, adult initiative. We now have a total of 22.
On page 20, on page seven, I'm counting 24.
Right now, we have 22. We're bringing, we have Title III, where we are hiring two more.
In which area?
They are going to be student success.
Okay. So.
I mean, which specialty?
Which specialty?
Yes.
You, you outlined them on page seven. So, which specialty?
Well, right now, they could be just generalists. We tried to highlight groups, so right now, that person would have more of a caseload. So, not everyone will have an emphasis. So, with the 22, you will see the different areas, but it will not come out to 22 different emphasis.
Actually, 20. Okay. So, wait a minute. I, you said 22. I'm counting 24. There's exceptional learner. So, it's more than what you're saying now. So.
Yes.
So, is the goal to get to the number that you have in this draft, or?
Yes. So, you'll see, and good, good point, exceptional learner. We have coaches over in our disabilities office that is going to also help out. I did not count them also in terms of those within moving over to academic affairs. But the goal is to have that 24 that you see. Yes.
While you're bringing in all of these together, cross-functional training.
Yes.
How will you ensure that just because someone that you're bringing in from, let's just say, the men's can appropriately coach someone who is?
Yes, thank you.
Disability?
Yes.
Or some other area. Like, you know, if you're bringing all of these together, under one roof, there's some concern about training.
Yes. So, we're using the NACADA training. So, we have a model for training. Kimmy Bonner is our trainer, and we also have Antoinette Duke, who's going to do the career training. So, think of this as the first level, in terms of everyone having the same skill set and knowledge to advise, mentor, and coach. As they move into their program, discipline area, that's when we go into the departments. So, I don't want you to think that the colleges are left out. There is an alignment where the second tier, when you get into the disciplines, the majors, the internship, all of those things, has a debt, an alignment with the colleges.
So, has this begun already? Have you started this process already?
Yes.
And so, you've reached out to the, here's my concern. We had a process before that wasn't very successful.
Right.
So, what, what initiatives do you have in place to make sure this is successful, particularly on the academic advisement side?
Yes. Well, thank you, trustee Young Ziegler, because as you know, I have been meeting with the deans and the chairs. because as you know, I have been meeting with the deans and the chairs and reviewing this plan, getting input, as well as asking the chairs if they had a model. And I'm pleased to share with you, a couple of your colleagues would like to pilot working with the advisors from the start. So again, within this plan, we have the commitment and the support of the department chairs to make sure that we have benchmarks, rubrics, and that we are tagging and tracking these students. So again, the end of spring, I should come back to you with data to see what has happened.
Just one more thing, and something that we discussed earlier, is once the students leave you, what's to encourage them to continue getting advisement through their progression to graduation?
Yes, that's, now, that is a support and a model where all of us, and I'm looking at you and smiling, with the deans and the chairs. As you know, I have asked them for a retention plan, and that it has to align now with this new model so that we are tracking where every student must know his or her advisor. All of the departments must now have a progression plan. So it's not just a one unit. This is a total cooperation with all of Academic Affairs.
You can continue.
Okay. Also, um, in terms of low-producing programs, would you like for me to move to that?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, per request, everyone. I have outlined for you our low-producing programs, but I would like for you to note that one of the programs highlighted when you come to the graduate area is a new program that's just starting out. So again, working in alignment with the T-HAC definition, here are the current programs that are low-producing. And I want to stop there for questions. So I'm sure you're gonna say, what, what you doing about it? And so what's the next step? We looked over these low-producing program over five years. Now we go to the college, the department to say, is this a need, what has happened? Give us a plan, and persac COC, we need a teach-out. So if you look at a program like, um, there's a history or whatever, we just can't stop that program. We have to do a teach-out and look at the faculty. Yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, just a quick foundational question from me. Are all of these created equal in terms of the costs associated with it?
No, no, not at all. And then if you look at the graduate level, you see engineering, that's a STEM, that's a PhD. It could be, we're not recruiting well enough. So even though it's a low-producing program, I now have to go to that college, that department, to say, I know for a fact that we need engineers. I know we need them in that STEM area. Is it the fact that we have not put enough resources in marketing and going out after these students?
Have we focused on what the niche is for Tennessee State, though, with some of these programs?
Yes.
So is there a need to continue them on? Should we revisit inactivity? What, what does all that look like? And maybe that's not an answer you have today, but maybe that's something we need to...
Well, I do have a projection for you all. We should know what's coming in terms of programs. We did a cross-study with our other sister institution. Trustee Tucker, I looked at that engineering program across Tennessee with the other schools to see if they are also low or high. They're not low. That's why I'm able to come to you and say, maybe we need to do a deep dive in why we're not attracting students here at Tennessee State in that particular program, because I know for a fact that program is booming other places. So again, it's not always equal. That means that we got to look at our workforce. And with all of the new companies moving in, there has to be an alignment. We're sitting right here in the middle of downtown Nashville. We should know what programs, degrees, these new companies. So that's my goal for 2025, to have that alignment so that we are future-ready for these companies.
I have another question. So when I'm looking at, um, programs that were supposed to be implemented, I believe there's public health, PhD, and then there was like a Master of Science in Business, data analytics. Those were scheduled to start in the fall previously, but then they have not started.
No, um, the PhD program in public health will basically kickoff in 2025.
Fall 2025, or...
Well, it was scheduled for spring where we would start the marketing, the recruiting, but the program should kickoff fall where we actually have a cohort. We also have the Masters of Science in our College of Business. That one should kickoff next spring, 2025. So please know, when we do, um, present a new program, it's to indicate there's a market for it. So we shouldn't be, you know, looking for students. That should have been conducted and was conducted in order for these programs to get to this level.
Can, can you give, um, just a brief overview of the criteria that's set forth by T-HAC as to what a low-producing program is?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask, again, Dr. Anderson to stand up and give that definition, if you wouldn't mind, trustee Northfleet, please.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
Just an overview of what the criteria is that T-HAC has put forth as to what qualifies as a low-producing program.
Oh, yes, so for the bachelor's degree, it's less than ten, and it's five-year average, less than ten. For your gra- graduate programs, it's a five-year average, less than five. For the doctoral program, five-year average, less than three. And the ed specialist, the same, five-year average, less than three.
So is there a way that you all can give us a plan for what it would look like to actually shut down these programs? So I'm looking specifically at like the bachelor's program, Bachelor of Science in Dental Hygiene. You haven't had a single graduate since 2021, and really, you have one in 2021 through 2022. So your five-year average is only one graduate. So how do you start the process, or what is the school's process to say, hey, this is a low-perform, low-performing program. Here's what we think we need to do. Here's how we would shut that down. Here's the impact to faculty. What does that look like?
Okay, so I want to just speak to the BS Dental Hygiene, because some of that data, they went inactive. That program went inactive for two years. So where you see those zeros, they were, they inactivated the program for a period of time. And I believe it just reactivated this past academic year.
So what, why just was it reactivated?
They changed their model. They went to do fully online. So it went from fully on-campus to an online program.
And so how many people are enrolled in the online program?
Okay, so if we go to, I'd have to go to the enrollment numbers. Hold on just a minute to see what, if they had an enrollment in fall 2024.
Do you want to use another model, I mean, another program?
S two. What's gonna happen going forward? Or you want me to respond to her question?
Okay, yes, you would respond to her, but then address...
Enrollment by college, a major, okay, just a minute. So in fall 2024, they had an enrollment of two students, and this was the reactivation going online.
And so how do you do a teach-out?
Okay, and so the teach-out is gonna be similar. We have to do a teach-out plan for, per SAC CLC for our institutional creditor, and then you as well have to do a teach-out plan for T-HAC. They're gonna follow the same process because T-HAC is recognizing and attempting to do all of their policies and procedures for academic programs, very similar to SAC CLC. And so we have to state that we're taking care of any students that are enrolled currently in the program. So you do a teach-out plan, what is gonna happen with these students, at what period of time? How are they gonna get all of the courses that are remaining for them? There is no set template that SAC CLC sets we have to follow, but what we have to submit is when we submit the prospectus to terminate, we must have a teach-out plan.
So I just, this is not my realm. My day job is being a lawyer. But I don't understand, if we just reactivated a program, and now we're gonna figure out how to terminate it again, what went into the decision to reactivate it? And, you know, that whole process of it going online, was there an advertisement? Did we, you know, promote this program to draw people in? It just, I, I don't quite understand that ebb and flow.
Okay, so what you're looking at is from T-HAC. These are low-producing. It's not to say that we're going to terminate. Again, I'm presenting to you because it was requested, where are your low-producing programs? So before we even get to a termination, there are other procedures to see, number one, like I just shared, like with the engineering. Is it, why is it low re-, um, you know, did we miss marketing? Did we miss recruiting, admission? What is going on? And then come back with a data analysis to say, well, wait a minute, um, this is happening before we get even into termination. So this is just a list of what was listed in terms of low-producing.
But you also have an AAS program in dental hygiene.
Yes, we do.
Producing, so...
Yes.
Is there a need for the bachelor's degree, if you have the associate's degree? So maybe we need to revisit just completely inactivate.
Yes, um, we have a dental hygiene associate degree that is thriving and doing well. So that BS in dental hygiene could be what we call off-centered from what we have in terms of the AAS. So these are the type of things that we sit and look at overall before we go into termination.
Quick question.
Yeah.
We have to get an exception to, to maintain that two-year degree, associate's degree? Is that, is that correct? When we, when we didn't... So the four-year colleges offering a two-year degree, did we have to get anything special in order to do that?
No.
No?
No.
So question, because you mentioned terminating a program, and then a program was inactive and then became active. So what's the difference in a program being inactive versus terminated? And what would the process be to make a program inactive versus terminated?
Okay, so it depends on which agency. So SAC CLC, our institutional creditor, they do not address inactivation. Either it's an active program, or it is not, and you go through the process. For T-HAC, you're allowed to inactivate the program. You have a certain time period. You have two years. So rather than terminate, T-HAC does allow for a program to go inactive. So for the bachelor's degree in dental hygiene, for example, we did not have to submit anything to SAC CLC. It was just inactivated. It was not terminated. So it depends on the criteria set by different agencies. For the state agency, a program is allowed to be inactivated, and they have two years to reactivate.
And so then what does that ultimately mean, that it's inactive? I mean, what does that mean for expenses associated with the program or students in the program? What is that?
I can't answer that question. That would be a college question, I guess, because I can just speak to the accreditation and T-HAC, how they look at it for, um, our programming or our active or API, okay, in the process to do that. Dr. Milton, make an answer to that.
Oh, and, and I've just been informed that for a terminate, for termination, it must come to the board. Lawrence?
Yes, I mean, when you're, if you're gonna terminate or eliminate an academic program, that has to be approved by the board.
But to become inactive, that can be an administration decision, or...
It would still come to the board to let you know that this program would be inactive.
To let us know, or for us to approve it?
Both.
Okay. But, and so for it to be inactive, we essentially have a two-year limit that it can remain inactive.
I believe it's a three-year time period with T-HAC, though, to be inactive. Is that correct? You get a three-year time period? And if you don't active, then you, then it's removed from the program inventory on the state agency side? Maybe it's a, okay, we can double-check. Will you double-check that?
Yes, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Just to close the loop on his question, so does it take board approval to reactivate it?
I'm sure, yes. We would come back to you to say why we would like to reactivate it, of course, with justification, numbers, um, demand, et cetera. So to conclude, I will come back to you all with an update on the retention plan, once we have everything in place. And the next board meeting would be March. I should have information, data, in terms of what has happened from this point until, um, as we get prepared for fall 2025.
So I'm, thank you for that. And I'm gonna make an additional request for some more information in terms of how do we review these low-producing programs and evaluate and have a decision tree so that we can actually think through and get a full picture of how many programs that we actually have, who's performing where, and then if there is some considerations that we need to take for low-performing programs, what does that look like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I additionally want to know what else, what's inactive right now?
Okay, and we can provide that, yes.
I have one more question about retention. For you, what does, I guess, success look like at the end of the semester with the retention plan, with what you kind of got drafted? Can you just give me a...
Yes, I'm looking at the number of students on probation after we receive the final grades. Because usually, if you have, um, students on probation, many of them will not come back. So I have to be ready for a retention plan for those who are on probation or suspension so that they don't stop out and never come back. Number two, it's over that winter break, how many have registered to come back? And they actually come back? And if they don't, we have to be ready in January, the first of January, to reach back. So we should know who has registered in good standing. And again, I'm gonna remove financial aid, okay? And why? So we have already a plan before the start of spring to find out who's not registered and why. The other, um, point I wanted to make very quickly, and I know it's late, we also conducted a survey of the number of seniors with thirty or less hours to graduate in good standing, without a balance, and we found two hundred and ninety-three. They, they're there. So we have a plan where we can provide to them online courses so that they can graduate. And again, they're in good standing. They just stopped out. And as you know, it could be for family. It could be for multiple reasons. But if they realize that they can complete their degree... But if they realize that they can complete their degree here at Tennessee State University online, they don't have to leave a job or a state or wherever they are. So again, we already know two hundred and ninety-three. We have already identified them and we have a plan for them to finish this spring. So that's part of the retention and going back and finding our students to get them back together.
Provost Milton, how far back graduating classes or entering classes would this two ninety-three include?
We went all the way back and I have, if you let me go, I can tell you the two ninety-three that we followed. I can pull that up in a few seconds. You want that now?
No, you can do it later.
Okay, yes, yes. But we have the students identified. In fact, we even have the flyer. So we know and we're going after those two ninety-three. But that's something else as I wrap up. We have an outstanding, approved, accredited, not just online courses. We have over thirty-three online programs. You know, we are in a digital age. Our people are all over the world. We need to put our resources, if we're going to increase enrollment, we have to go global. So that's one of the strategic goals that we have for twenty-five is to expand the marketing for our online programs.
Any other questions for Provost Milton?
Last but not least, I'm, you have coming up just an update on academic affairs. I have every college listed in your report. Just to say, thank you to you all for promoting TSU. We had the Grizzlies to come out and they actually had us on their Jumbotron this week. I got calls from all over, TSU, TSU. The more we market, the more we highlight and promote our programs, the more people are gonna want to come to Tennessee State University. So in your package, you see that all of our colleges are working hard. We're talking excellence. And I am pleased to share with you to date for 2024, on behalf of Quincy Quick and Sponsored Research, we have fifty-five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand in grant awards with over one hundred awards. We're doing well. So again, on behalf of all of Tennessee State, not just academic affairs, I am pleased to share that, yes, we are doing outstanding and excellent things. And I know it's late and you need to report from student affairs, but this is one person that's happy to be here. And thank you for allowing me to support Tennessee State.
Just one more thing before you leave. I, I wanted to share with the board and also get your input and maybe Dr. Anderson's input as well. There are two letter of notifications of new programs with T HAC right now.
Yes.
That I believe have not been responded to. And in reviewing, if we're gonna have you review low-performing programs, I might make a suggestion that you consider removing those other programs that you're submitting to T HAC. I think one is like Africana Studies and the other one is the Masters of Science and Nutrition or Wellness. So if you, I think there's been a delay in your response to T HAC from, from TSU. So you have pulled them? Have you went through the right process to pull them from T HAC, though? Is the other question. If not, I believe we need to make some consideration. And you might have to chime in on this because I believe the previous board approved those to go forward. So do we need to retract those programs as well?
So I would just speak to my conversation that I've had with our senior VP of Academic Affairs. I'm sorry, Director of Academic Affairs at T HAC. They have been informed, they're, they're been put on hold. And we have confirmed, and maybe I'm getting that two-year period because there is that two-year period that they will stay like in limbo or in the pipeline. So they're aware, we have communicated, they're being put on hold, okay? And so we haven't retracted them because it's the revised L O N. It's not the original L O N, it's the revised. So it's been through the board, it's been approved, it's done the L O N. We just have to respond to their analysis. Is that sufficient, Dr. Northley?
I'll accept it, but I'm wondering if we need to just retract them, but I'll.
Is there a process to fully retract? Because I have communicated with them, but.
I mean, I guess it would also be that the board has to make the suggestion or vote to remove those since it was already approved.
Well, yeah, I guess we need to figure out exactly what they wanna do with respect to the program. And you're talking about withdrawing or terminating or that type of thing. So there would need to be some sort of involvement. So I, I would need to follow up with them and find out exactly what their, what communications and what they're doing.
Okay.
With T HAC.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Goldman.
Good evening again. I'm standing between you and dinner as well as you and the traffic. So I'll be very concise. It's too late for traffic? It's too late? All right, well, not traffic, just dinner, okay? You know, we're not gonna stay two hours, definitely not, yep. The student affairs update, just wanna share some information. What you have in your board packet, really and truly because of the timeframe we put it together, which was a month ago or so, it's a list of activities and programs that we've done in student services. One of the things that I identified pretty readily is the fact that we had several different departments. And speaking of which, if you look at student affairs, we have counseling, health, career, student activities orientation, student conduct, wellness, cheerleading, band, one-stop disability, veteran, food pantry, residence life and campus center. Each one of these areas do programming, all right? And for, for the whole area, what we found is that oftentimes our left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing. And so we were overstepping each other, all right? And also the programming was done in such a way that it, there was no meaning to the program. In student affairs, okay? There's an involvement in learning theory, students that are involved, students in the band, students that are in cheerleading, students in student clubs and organizations. If they're involved, they stay. But we have to be intentional about their growth, just like there are learning outcomes in the classroom, KPIs in terms of performance with initiatives and financials. There's also performance outcomes for students. There's development, student development. Chickering's model, there's seven vectors of student development, okay? And with those vectors, we have to be very intentional about the programming that we do to make sure that there's growth in different areas, okay? So all the programs you have listed in your board group, in, in your board book, that was done without paying attention to the student development model. And so what we're doing is we're putting an umbrella around that to make sure that everything we do in student services is under, that it promotes holistic student growth and the S T U D E N T piece. And you can see here for the vectors for chickering, that's the whole piece of student development. We have self-identity, we have task completion, understanding emotions, dependence to dependality, emotional connections, navigating, and then also trusting and developing integrity. But also our key departments in the area are mapped to those vectors as well, just to make, just to make it full circle, okay? So the activities and the workshops and the different programs that we're doing, they're gonna be mapped to vectors, they're mapped. So we take a look at the hundred and seventy-five programs we did in the fall semester. We had self-identity, we did thirty programs in that area, task competence, thirty-two, dependence to interdependence, twenty-nine, emotional connections, fifty-two, navigating goals, twenty-six, trusting, and six, and nothing in understanding emotions. Again, we just mapped what we did to the vectors. And you can see we have a real big gap in terms of certain areas. And so now with intentionality, we're gonna make sure that everything we do, number one, we're collaborating so that there's one portal. So when a program or workshop is submitted, it goes through a portal. We discuss it and then it's mapped to a vector so we can understand. And we also have learning outcomes that are associated with it, okay? The other area I provide leadership under and over is enrollment services. You got a little information about enrollment services before. These are the different areas, is recruitment, graduate admissions, undergraduate admissions, records, registration, and the call center. The thing that, this is a slide, I think somehow or another we missed that one. Sterling, the one that we added, it wasn't up there. We added the piece, but that's okay, that's okay. It's, it's, it's good. One of the pieces that's important as it relates to the whole model for student support is that we are being intentional about some areas that really matter to our students. And that's the mental health and the physical health. And so what we are bringing on board is an initiative called timely care. Timely care provides twenty-four-seven access for our students that are in mental distress and also for physical health. So if a student is having, if a student needs to see a counselor or talk to somebody right now, they can pick up their cell phone and dial a number on an app and talk to somebody ASAP, okay? If a student needs to see a psychiatrist, a psychologist, et cetera, they're covered under the timely care app. Let's just say we have a student this Saturday night and they feel horrible, they have a cold, they think it's a sinus infection. On the timely care app, they can log in and see a medical professional ASAP. And they can send that prescription to CBS or whatever their choice is. It's okay, but you can leave it there. They can send it to CBS, whatever that is, that medical professional. And then they can, they can have it Ubered right to their residence hall and be covered. That's timely care. And so that's something that we're trying to put in place. We've already, we were in procurement right now to make sure our students have the whole wraparound services and implemented in January. So that's one resource. And the other resources that we talked about, I alluded to earlier, was the whole Chick-fil-A model of student support. And that's a Tiger Support Center where we'll have individuals that were actually in advising will now be cross-trained in the areas of admissions, financial aid, the Bursar Office to answer those questions. As the vice president, I field a lot of questions about students and their bills, what's going on with their bills, why is there a hole in their account, et cetera. We have a formal call center, but our call center is remote. They, they, they're not TSU employees. So oftentimes they have to log a incident and then get that message to somebody on our campus and we have to figure out what's going on. The Tiger Support Unit will be able to answer calls and inquiries and solve our problems immediately. So those are the big things that's going on with student services right now. I'll open the floor for questions.
I, I have one.
Sure.
Implementing the new healthcare app and services to students, is that gonna cost additional fees for the student? How are we paying for that?
It's no fee to the student at all. And we're using Title III dollars to, to cover it. Yep, and it's, it's both mental health and physical health, yep.
Anybody else?
I was giving the committee time to ask their questions.
Yes.
You listed a lot of the activities that were kinda specialized, so cheerleaders, AOB.
Yep.
What about the general population?
Sure.
What types of activities for those students who aren't in a specialized group? How are you catering to them?
Absolutely. Well, we have the Office of Student Life, okay? And they do generalize activity and programming. As a matter of fact, even for our freshman students, we have the freshman year experience, et cetera. They cover activities for all students as well. So the men's initiative and the women's initiative transitioned over to academic affairs. But the programming aspect still falls in student affairs in terms of programming for all students. So the Office of Student Life does programming for all students, not just for specialized groups. But we do have the Counseling Center that does programming, all students invited. We have our Health Center that does programming. We'll have Office of Student Life that'll do programming. We have our, our Office of Student Conduct that does programming. We also have the Career Center that does programming. But again, one program from each of those areas can happen on the same night if it's not coordinated. And so the student has that conflict. So we're trying to make sure that it's spread out and it also feeds into our vector for development.
And how are these programs funded?
The Office of Student Life. And we do have a grant from FedEx. That's, we have two grants from FedEx. We have two grants, major grants. One is a hundred thousand dollars for student programming. And then we have another grant that's a little over a hundred thousand dollars to. Many of our programs don't require financing. It's tapping into the skillset that we have right here. We have certified licensed professional counselors. We have a M D that's on staff that does all kinds of workshops. We have an attorney that's on staff that does student conduct. So many of our programs don't require, it's actually the people, resources.
I have a question about recruitment. So we've been talking a lot about how the enrollment decline and what is, are you working on a recruitment plan? What does that look like? I mean, most people at this point in time, they're doing their early enrollment, so they've already applied. So do we have any number of students or what are we looking like for a class of next year?
Yep, absolutely. We are working on a recruitment plan. We have, we're in, we have, we're in draft mode right now. I think we're up to like a hundred and twenty-three pages of initiatives that are laid out for recruitment. That is a separate meeting that we'll have with you because it is pretty detailed in terms of getting that out and talking about initiatives. One of the things we talked about is defining the TSU student, the TSU avatar. We have to decide what that student looks like. It may not be that we are looking to recruit the student that's a four-point-O and a thirty ACT. It may be that that niche market for us is a three-point-three with around a ten-sixty, ten-eighty because that student is gonna come and stay. We wanna recruit for retention. We wanna do it one time and have them graduate. So we wanna recruit a class that's gonna impact and stay so that we're not thirty-three percent in for that freshman class, but we're seventy, seventy-five percent in so that we have fewer numbers to recruit for the next class in this market. So that's the analytics that we're working towards and working on.
Cause I wanna say, I currently have a junior in high school. And from our last board meeting to this one, I've kept every piece of mail he has received from colleges across the country. He has not received one piece of mail from Tennessee State University. And he is, you know, I would consider an ideal student, in-state, you know, the ability to pay, three-point-eight GPA. He's at a high school that he will graduate with an associate's degree in addition to his high school diploma. So are we missing out on the class of twenty-twenty-six right now? Because I mean, he's being heavily recruited. And like I said, I, I have every piece of mail he's received. And we've received multiples from some schools. So have we just lost that class? Are we just now thinking about recruiting the class of twenty-twenty-seven?
No, Justy, you're absolutely right. We're focused on, number one, stabilizing the ship. And I'm just gonna be honest with you in terms of what, when, and where. We have systems right now that are not the most effective. We have recruiters that are working and working hard, but we need direction. It's almost like a, it's the difference between having a sniper approach and having a shotgun approach. And right now, we have a shotgun approach with no strategy. That's why we're hiring a VP of Enrollment Management so that person can be a strategist, okay? And help to implement that plan. We're writing a plan right now for a person that's not here right now, okay? But we're writing that plan and with the help of Dr. Johnson and another person that is really, really good in enrollment management. But, so it's about focusing and trying to stop the flow of water right now. Right now, we have a ship that has a lot of water in it and we have to plug it. And so we're working really hard to get that plug, but we have to build it as well. And that's that, that enrollment plan with direction, okay? It's all, it also means retraining people. You know, we've done things a certain way for a while. We have the same people in place, quite a few in terms of that area. And so we need to reskill, retool and do some professional development on what's best practices in terms of how to make that happen, okay? And we have an issue with brand identity as well. I know that I got the college based upon. I know that I got to college based upon a recommendation from a high school counselor with that person had their preferences in terms of where students go. We have to build relationships so that TSU is the first thing out their mouth and not the exception. We need to be the rule, okay? And so that's important, too. So it's not that we forgot, it's just that we have to get our strategy together, and that's just being transparent with you, okay?
I know one of the issues we talked about is the Friday laps for students going home. Are there any plans to implement activities on Fridays so students do stay on campus and get that sense of belonging? I've looked at your list of activities that you've offered this semester, and most of them, to her point, is geared toward students who are involved in organizations. So what about targeted things for students who are not involved in organizations? These activities can happen on Friday to help keep students here on Friday and also to build that sense of belonging, and also to build morale and make students proud and, you know, in the spirit of competition, you know, proud to be here at TSU. So are there any plans moving forward to offer, for example, intramural sports? Something like, I know pickleball is the big thing now, doesn't take much, doesn't take much to put in a pickleball court. Flag football is a big deal now. So just building on those things that are all the rage right now to help our students build that sense of belonging here at TSU outside of everything that's going on at TSU.
Excellent question, and you nailed it. There is a plan, that's why we're intentional now. What you have before you is just a list of what happened. I can't say that that's reactive on my part. Typically, in Student Services, what happens is you use the summer months to build your plan, to build everything you do. So everything we do for the fall semester and for the spring semester is push play. Because in June, July, you build it all out, okay? And it maps and it's coordinated. But that's hard to do when you start right before school starts. And so I didn't have an opportunity to kind of help team, to help the team, to develop the team. The whole piece about vectors, we're doing program, and we have no idea why we're doing vectors. That's why we're in this business, is to help develop. We come alongside Academic Affairs, okay? Academic Affairs does the whole intellect piece, we do the whole social development, holistic development. A student at TSU cannot leave, should not leave TSU without being fully developed, not just on the career side. Actually, that's what employers say, soft skills. Who's responsible for the soft skills? We are, but we have to be intentional. It just doesn't happen happenstance. And so just give us a little time to make sure we get it all together. But intramurals is a big part of that, that's a sense of belonging, that's finding that friend group, okay? That's finding your tribe, that's all a part of, too, as well. Justy Smith, you had something, please, please go.
The Friday model, I was trying to understand why there aren't classes on Friday? If that is still effective, will we consider moving back to a five-day schedule? Because, and what does that look like? Is there a timeline for that? Will that require board approval?
Justy, Nerflig defer to.
That's a yes and a yes. Right now, we do not have scheduled classes. They have activities on Friday. That means we have a lot of buildings that are not being used, et cetera, et cetera. We have already met with the colleges to talk about returning classes back on Fridays. So this spring, you'll have some classes, but this fall, we have a strategic plan for classes to come back on Friday.
Just one last thing before we adjourn. I wanted to, Dr. Milton, you can step here, too. The Men's Initiative and the Women's Initiative, you had a report in Student Affairs for those two groups. However, they're moving to.
They just moved.
Just moved. But there seems to be a number of great events that were taking place from that holistic approach.
Sure.
Are you going to be able to still sustain that on the academic side if they're focusing on those gen ed types of things and try to academically enforce versus? Everybody wants to hear.
Absolutely. I can speak to it from the very first piece of it, and that is that they are just moving now. They're just transitioning Academic Affairs, and it's to expand their reach. We have to do more on the side of retention, so not just segmented groups, but to expand that so that the young women that are transgendered or individuals that are transgendered or whatever's going on, you know, whatever they select, that they have, they have a tribe, they have a group, they have programming, okay? That we're not excluding any individuals, we're being inclusive. And so we're expanding their caseload to include all students. And so, yeah, and so you can speak to the different. But the programming will not go away, okay? We're just expanding the program, and we're adding on a layer of retention because we know that we have a crisis right now in higher education for our black men. We have a crisis. And so expanding that to provide them with additional support, not just for the Men's Initiative, but additional support that's academic. And otherwise, we need to keep those students that we recruit and encourage them to bring their friends by all means, so.
And remember now, they will be able to advise, because right now, they don't advise, coach, mentor, career. So that's that new model that we're bringing so that now, when they work with the Women Initiatives or whatever, they'll be able to advise them also. And they would have, all of them with the special emphasis will have a reduced caseload versus the others.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Some move.
Second.
Call in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned at six seventeen, thank you.